This is the meeting of the regular meeting of the Board of NIC Trustees. We're proposing, or we need to see if we have a quorum. I think we need to ask for it first. And I see everybody is here, so we have a quorum. So we're talking about having an executive session. I have a statement.
You've not called me to order this.
Yeah, okay, call me if you want to order this, thank you. And no gavel, so I guess I can tap on the table and that'll work, right? So in terms of the executive session, I have a couple things to read here. I'm doing a little bit longer process than normal because I want everybody to be comfortable. Okay, so I need a message, a motion to go into executive session pursuant to Idaho Code, Section 74, 206.1B and F, to receive a status update and advice from the college attorney regarding the notice of tort and federal complaint filed by Laura Rumpfler. The executive session is not noticed as an action item. Okay, everybody understands that. It is for discussion status only to get information. The chair shall not allow any other legal concerns or matters to be discussed. If discussion regarding any other legal concern or matter is brought up, the chair will immediately adjourn the meeting as directed by this motion and the Idaho Open Meeting law. Anybody have any questions? So I need a motion. I'll restate the motion.
Thank you.
Of course. I need a motion to go into executive session pursuant to Idaho Code 74, 206.1B and F, to receive a status update and advice from the college attorney regarding the notice of tort and federal complaint filed by Laura Rumpfler. Do I have a second? Second it. So we need a vote.
Discussion, I think.
A discussion, yeah.
Did people put any concern?
Chair Rumpfler.
Yes, you have the floor.
I have a few comments. At the August 31st meeting, we did not have adequate information to evaluate and decide on this issue. Today, I have the information I need to make, to take action, including the notice of tort claim for consent and the dossier report. I prepare to make a decision on this issue when the board chair puts it on the agenda. From my previous experience, going into executive session has not been helpful, as the action taken by the majority in open session following executive is inconsistent with the discussion that's gone on in executive session. I understand your motion and that's all I have to say.
Okay, any other discussion? So we need a vote. Barry?
No.
No? All right. Bye. The motion fails. We'll see you at 6:00.
Okay, let's go ahead. It's 6:00. We need to reconvene, so it's a call to order. We have, it looks like everyone is here, so we have a quorum. So let's go ahead and do the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so I have a message. There's a lot going on. It looks like we don't have that many people here tonight. Just like to talk about, remember our goals are to make NIC flourish again, and in fact, you're going to find out that from the work the president is doing and the board's doing that it is heading the right direction, and we need to resolve NWCCU issues. There's been a lot of good actions taking place for the college in the last five weeks. It's been pretty intense. So Dr. Swain and I went over, and I'll just talk about this briefly, and then there'll be, later in the meeting, there will be more detail. But Dr. Swain and I went to accreditation meeting on February 2nd in Seattle. It appears to have gone well, but Dr. Swain will have more comment about that later in the meeting. President Swain, myself, trustee Brad Corkhill, interim provost Lloyd Duman, and trustee Terry Zimmerman went to Washington DC the next week and talked to our elected representatives about our legislative requirements or changes in federal law, especially around the idea of Pell Grants. I've asked the rest of the team to make comments on that later tonight. I'm just going to hit the top of it here. Then the next week, President Swain, myself, and trustee Banducci went to Boise to support the presentation of budget requests to the Senate Education Committee. Of course, President Swain did the actual presentation. It's Senate Education Committee, House Education Committee, and JFAK, which is the legislature's Budget Committee. And so the school was asking for money to do certain things, and they would be the ones that have to approve it, so we'll see what happens. The target for the legislature to be out of session is March 10th, but historically they haven't made it, so we'll see what really happens. But sometime in March, they would know, we will know what's going to happen. Okay? Then the next week after that, this last week, the board had a meeting with ACC consultants who've been very helpful, and we worked on parliamentary procedure and how to improve our minutes. Hopefully, we can go make progress on that. Also, with the agreement of Dr. Swain, I'm working on one of the requests, the post or police officer.
Standards and training.
Standards and training out, that we would like to do out at Rathorne, maybe $12 million, and I'm helping do some justification on that. So it's very busy. We should know, and again, we should know about most of these or all of these by the end of March, when they finish their process down at the legislature. I just want to, going to make one comment. Being a trustee is supposed to be a part-time position, but it's sure not been that way over the last five weeks. It's been really intense for all of us, okay? But we have the yearly processes we have to do to get money or request money, et cetera, so we have to go through those steps now. And it looks like it'll work pretty good. So just overall, a lot of work for NIC has been done by President Swain's team and the So that's my, end of my introduction there. One thing I would like to talk about, I talked about the AC, or talk about further, I talked about the ACCT meeting, and we were working on Robert's Rules of Order and that type of thing. Specifically, I'm asking that everybody try and be polite and not attack any persons in the meeting. We've had some of that, and that's not good. Specifically, as chairman, in terms of process, if I can get the agreement of everybody here, in terms of, we were talking over each other last meeting, and I'd like to own the floor, so I'll recognize you guys, give you the floor, and then you give it back to me, and we'll go and formalize that process a little more. So when you're, when you, when you want the floor, ask me, and then I'll make sure nobody else is talking. When you are done, then tell me you're done, and I'll take it back, and so on. We need to be more disciplined about that, okay? And then one other comment that's been made, for making a motion, please say I move that and then list what you're saying. We've been using other wording, and I got some advice on that. Okay? So that's the beginning. So next, we have celebrating success, Safety Fest. Dr. Swain?
Yes, Colby Mattila is our director of the Workforce Training Center, and he is going to cover Safety Fest. It was a really, really nice event. I went out there and spent a couple hours, and he'll, he'll give you all the details.
Thank you for having me tonight, Chair Wagner, trustees, Attorney Boils, and President Swain. I'm excited to share with you an event we had at the Workforce Training Center called Safety Fest of the Great Northwest. Safety Fest is a combined effort of large and small businesses that come together to provide safety training for everyone in the area at no cost. They have three days. They spend at the Workforce Training Center through a variety of programs. We offered 147 different courses, and 142 different companies were represented there as well. These classes demonstrate, demonstrations and workshops are free to the public and ensure that everyone has opportunities and skills. Over the past 10 years, we've provided free safety training to 12,865 students in the area. This year, we had a 10-year high of 607 individual registrations and 1,577 combined registrations. So a pretty good return on students taking multiple courses. We had 463 from the state of Idaho, 142 from Washington, two from Montana, and oddly, we had one come up from California. So we're pulling students in from a large area, 55 instructors, 18 exhibitors, 15 sponsors, and a large number of students. If you look at the video up behind you, we offer training in everything from healthcare, basic first aid, stop the bleed, all the way to forklift and scissor lift. And I am open for questions.
Any questions?
Chair, I have one. Chair, I have one.
Yes, you're recognized.
Thank you. When you say no cost, is this funded through Idaho grants, federal grants?
Sponsorships and volunteers.
I have a question, Chair.
Are you done?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
How can a vendor or a provider sign up to participate next year?
Just email me, and we'll get you signed up.
Okay.
Any further questions? I just have one comment. There's a lot of good things going on at the school. I don't think that they get enough recognition for this, and I'd just like to say thank you. This is a great, another great thing that the school is doing for the community.
Thank you.
Great, thanks, Colby.
Okay, so then let's have the constituent reports.
Thank you, Chair Wagner, President Swain, Board of Trustees, members of the community. ASNC's been mainly focusing on projects this month. As most of you can see, we now have the president's wall. If you go out there, you could see every single ASNC president from 1933 to, I believe it stops at 2015. We just need to find the correct card stock. And then we have all of the pictures except for one, which I have the contact for, the last one we need. So that project's almost concluded, and it's been super nice. We're working on a suggestion box for students, and that's also almost done. The student who took on that project, she's in the graphic design program, so she was able to like paint a box and add an ASNC logo and create some graphics for it. So that should be up within around a month, so that's good. Election applications are open for next month, so we'll be tabling and advertising on social media on how students can apply to be in student government. March 4th is when they open, and they're open until April 2nd. Polls open in the second week of April, so the April board meeting will be my last board meeting, and then whoever the ASNC president will take control from there. We finished most of the work on the Constitution. We've just gone over a bunch of the articles and just updated them, because there are quite a few grammatical errors, but we're just finishing that up. We're helping advertise campus resources by tabling with disability support services and counseling services. I'm sure most of the people who have been on campus have seen the little advertisement, advertisements popping up on the computer screens. We are planning the day of service, which is set for April 20th, and our annual survey, which will go out to students around the same time. We helped check in students at night at the library, which was a huge success, where we recorded more students than last year. Vice President Hershey and I went to the governor's luncheon, which we really enjoyed hearing from him. I met with the State Board of Education yesterday, along with the other associated student presidents across the state of Idaho, letting them know what is on the forefront of students' minds. And then other than that, we've been doing our duties, including office hours, committee meetings, get involved booth hours, and whatever comes up. And yeah, do you guys have any questions or comments for me?
Any questions from anybody?
Chair, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Michael, I'm just curious. It's been almost a year that you've been in this role, is that right?
Yeah.
Well, I think you've done a great job.
Thank you.
How many hours per month do you devote to your role?
Um, so it's about eight to 10 hours per week. That's what it's by in the Constitution. Generally, I go a little bit over, but that's just because some instances.
Very good, thank you.
Any other questions?
Chair, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Do you mind sharing what kind of resources do you use to go all the way back to 1933, or those a long time ago was maybe already done?
So, yeah, so most of the project was done. I'm trying to remember the name. His name is Dean, but I don't know the last name. I want to say Dean Bennett, but that doesn't sound right. The old ASNC advisor, apparently putting back up the president's wall and taking it down and putting it back up has been a frequent occurrence over the years. So we're just, we have everything from last time it got taken down, and then this, we're just continuing it on. And hopefully, it'll continue in the future.
Any other questions? Thank you very much for your, for your effort and all the good work.
Thank you.
Faculty Assembly?
A warm but wintry welcome to you, Chair Wagner, trustees, President Swain, community members, and my remarkable NIC family of staff, faculty, and students. Faculty Assembly met on February 20, February 8th, and addressed the following items of business. Standing reports and statements were given from Senate, Student Learning Outcomes Assessment SLOA Committee, adjunct faculty, and advising. Updates on the Academic Freedom Committee progress on the academic freedom policy was given by Joe Jacoby. Faculty were to review the draft and provide edits and comments by March 1st to the committee, and that draft was in a Box folder that faculty has access to. Additionally, an update on the Faculty Course Evaluation Committee was provided in advance of the meeting to me by General Education Dean Sherri Simkins. The draft document was provided to faculty through Box with a request of feedback by February 20th to Dean Simkins, and we will have a final report on both of those committees at the, at the March meeting. In the chair report, I updated faculty on the newest version of the accreditation timeline, the 30-day period between the February 2nd NWCCU Commission meeting and when the decision has to be announced to us. Jacoby was able to tell us at that time that the scheduled April NWCCU site visit would be canceled, to give the college more time to address the items in our sanction of show cause prior to the scheduled October, November site visit. I updated faculty on the March due date to begin the process of identifying and verifying their contractual community and college service, not community, that's incorrect, I'm sorry, committee and college service. This process will take place in March, as we do every year, and once that is finished, then it's forwarded to the president's office, per NIC policy. Faculty will be sending me a list of their various off-campus college service activities to facilitate providing the president with a list of the ways faculty represent NIC in our community, state, region, and nationally. Under Old Business, we received a clarification from Provost Lloyd Duman on the rationale for the common course times that will be implemented in fall 2024. There was some question about that with the faculty, and Provost Duman was able to explain that the realigned course start times will better allow students to register for needed classes without there being any overlap, and hopefully be able to increase student retention. In New Business, the faculty were treated to a outstanding presentation on our dental hygiene program by Dental Hygiene Director Janice McClelland. Her program is a state-of-the-art medical program that is filling a desperate need in North Idaho for dental hygienists. Congratulations to Janice and her entire team on this shining example of the critically needed programs of study provided on this campus. The final item of New Business was a brief presentation by Teresa Huff on NIC's Open Education, or OER, work group, and the connection to the state of Idaho's Project Z initiative to incentivize the adoption, adaption, and creation of low- or no-cost educational materials and textbooks for students. Teresa answered a number of questions. I know that two of the, two NIC faculty are going to go with her in April to the National OER Conference, so we look forward to more information about low- and no-cost textbooks for our students. Then after various announcements for the good of the order, the February meeting of 2024 was adjourned. With that, I am open for questions.
Any questions? No questions, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, good evening, Chair Wagner, trustees, and President Swain. Before I kind of get to what I was talking about, I do want to say, Chair Wagner, I appreciate your comments when you started the meeting on trying to keep it civil. So tonight, I'm presenting a statement from Staff Assembly regarding trustees' behavior during public comment on January 24th, 2024. The statement voted, or was voted on and approved by Staff Assembly at our last meeting. To the Board of Trustees, Staff Assembly, representing the collective voices and concerns of the college staff, is writing to express our deep disappointment and concern regarding trustee Banducci's behavior during public comment at the January 24th, 2024 Board Meeting. We believe that fostering respectful and collaborative working environment is crucial for the success of our institution, and trustees Banducci's actions have fallen short of these expectations. Trustees Banducci's behavior towards a staff member acting as a private individual violates Policy 2.01.10, Board Member, sorry, Board Member General Conduct was disrespectful and unprofessional and created an uncomfortable and hostile environment. As advocates for the well-being of all staff members, we find such conduct unacceptable, unacceptable to the college atmosphere we strive to maintain. Request that the board issue a public apology and take steps to rectify the situation.
Is that all you've got, or?
That's all I got tonight.
Okay, any questions? None? Thank you very much. Senate?
Chair Wagner, Board of Trustees, Dr. Swain, community members. Senate's been busy. We conducted first reads on one policy and three procedures, which included Policy 4.01, which is program evaluation, and then Procedure 4.01, program evaluation, procedure on faculty's sabbatical, and procedure on textbook adoption. We also reviewed two new committee proposals and gave our approval for the creation of those. One was the Open Education Resources Committee, which is a vital committee, committee to help facilitate finding cheap resources for our students at no cost or low cost, either or developing those. The second committee was a, is a first-year faculty committee, which will also help first-year faculty lean in to the faculty community, to the institution, learn about our culture, and be able to serve our students better. We then conducted second reads on one policy and two procedures. Policy was 7.01.04, Continuous Professional Services Contracts, and then Procedure 3.04.1, Sick Leave, and Procedure 3.02.09, Tenure. All those were approved on second read, and Policy 7.01.04, Continuous Professional Service Contracts is now ready for you, the board. That's all I have.
Okay. Any questions? No? Thank you very much. President's Report.
Thanks, Chair Wagner. So there, there'll be a slide up behind me and in front of us while I'm doing this. I do want to cover a couple things that are, and then I'll get into the report. This, this is the North Idaho Business Journal, came out yesterday, I believe, and you'll see there's a, there's a really nice article that highlights some of the great work that is being done at our Workforce Training Center, so that unpaid advertising, if you will, really strong article in there, so if you want, if you have an opportunity, take a look at it. There's, you know, a bunch of articles. Athletics, our basketball team is back. I think we're currently, men's basketball ranked third in the, in SWAC. And we have a program called JazzNIC. And so there was a very nice article about JazzNIC, providing music for the community free of charge in Schuler Auditorium. The, so on, another, another nice article about our yoga program, so it's not, it's not about the sheriff, it's about the yoga program that is offered for seniors in the community. And then we had a, we have a really good writing program here, and the, they often bring in nationally-known writers to be guest speakers, and so we had a nationally-known writer, Maya Jewel Zeller, who's a poet. She came in and got to speak to the community. The, I've got to find the right article. So Safety Fest you heard about, and Safety Fest of the Great Northwest, again, a couple of articles about that. So really good coverage. Our comms marketing team is getting out there and letting people know what we're doing, and as a result, they're, we're seeing really positive coverage in the, in the media. So I'll start with that. And then, again, before I get onto the report, you hear a lot about Kathleen and others talking about these committee assignments in the Senate. And the reason why that's important is our faculty have a contractual requirement to serve on a committee. And when I got here, one of the things I looked at was, we, I don't know, had 30 committees, maybe more, I don't know, a lot of, lot of committees, and many of them had not provided a report in several years. And a report is, an annual report is required, and so what, what that's evident of is a committee that's actually not doing anything. And so we're, we're not, we're not asking our faculty to step up and do that kind of work, the service work. So Kathleen is really working on scrubbing that list of committees, working with the Senate to form new committees and get rid of the old committees that aren't doing anything. And so that's, that's a really important task, because that's about a 25% assignment by contract, that if, if you're able to, if you, you know, if you know that the committee is never going to meet, and, and that meets your requirement, then there are a lot of folks that will sign up for that committee. And so then they're, they're not providing about 25% of their contracted workload. So making sure that that's all cleaned up and that we have committees that make a difference and are doing that, the appropriate level of service is really an important task. So that's why you keep hearing about that. All right, on to the official report. So I based my president's report on the president's So I based my president's report on the president's goals that were approved earlier this year, or actually last year. The first thing is accreditation. As Chair Wagner noted, we had, we met with the full commission on February 2nd. We're anticipating the full report this Friday, March 1st, and we'll make that public once received, probably sometime either late Friday or Monday, depending on when we get it. It's, we've had several meetings with, with the N W C C U representatives, since then, trying to understand and, and really fine-tune the report so that it, it accomplishes the good that they want to accomplish without any, without harming the institution. And the, the big thing that I'm concerned about is enrollment. And, and for the first time in, I'll say, about 12 years, we have some really good news on enrollment. For the past 10 or 12 years, we've declined, our enrollment numbers have declined 3% to 6%, and sometimes more, sometimes less. And for the, so for the first time, and we compare spring enrollments this year with spring enrollments last year. So it's, when I talk about these numbers, it's increase in enrollments from last spring are up 19.2% over last year. That's, that's a huge number. I mean, community colleges around the country continue to have declining enrollment, and a couple of folks in the audience have, have brought that up. But, so having a 19.2% increase, that represents about a 10% increase in our transfer programs and about a 65% increase in our career and technical education programs. Combined, the average is an increase of 19.2%. So that's, that's a huge turnaround for us, and it's been the result of about a year of work, very concerted work by a lot of people on campus. Our continuing transfer students are, is down, it, the enrollment numbers are down, but it's 0.1%. So essentially, it's flat. And again, so if you're going from a 3% to 6% average loss to a flat, then that's, that's a really good improvement. And we still have a couple of days left for late starts, so this, that, we, you know, I think all we need is one student, and we're in the positive. Dual credit, dual credit enrollment is down 1%. We still have a couple, maybe a week or two before the last of our dual credit enrollment numbers are in. So we may, we may be flat on that as well. And continuing transfer students are, that's students that had credits, earned credits somewhere else at some other institution and transferred in here is essentially equal to where we were last year. So big increase in the number of freshmen and flat in several other areas is a really good sign. And I, and I want to highlight why that is important. We have, if we get 100 students in as new freshmen, there's always going to be leakage, particularly at a community college, because students come here, they want to take, you know, six math classes and then transfer. They want to take some, a couple of other courses and transfer. Our welding course is a phenomenal program. It's a two-year program, but our welding program is so good that after the first year, the students are employable, and they get hired out of the program, so they never complete. And while that's a great commendation of our welding program, it counts as a negative because the students don't complete the program. They left to get jobs, which is what we want them to do, but from the state accounting perspective, it's, it's a non-completor. So, so we're always going to have those programs, and so you start with 100, you might lose 8% on average. And so if you start with fewer every year, if this year, we start with 100, next year, we start with 3% less, we start with 97, we're never going to get back up. And so it's so important, even if the numbers are small, that we turn that around and start getting, starting with more students, so that that 8% loss or 5% loss that we're going to continue to have doesn't put us at a negative for the year. So, so I'm particularly emphasizing those, those recruiting and, those recruiting efforts that represent new students to N I C. So dual-credit transfer students and new freshmen, and that's why I highlight those numbers. So now that we're kind of closing out our spring enrollment numbers, the recruiting and retention teams are shifting focus to summer and fall. So we have about 30 new face-to-face programs, they're on the website, that are going to be offered this summer. And I recall last month, I talked about that, there's, there's about 30 new programs that are going to be offered, 30 new classes are going to be offered this summer, that, that last year, we only offered one face-to-face. This year, we're offering 30. So that's a big jump. And I'll, I want to highlight one in particular, and that is our anatomy and physiology class. Most community colleges don't have an anatomy lab, so they can teach a anatomy class and just look at pictures on the screen, but for that class to transfer to a pre-med, you know, a pre-MD course or a nursing program at a four-year institution, you have to have a three-credit class with a one-credit anatomy lab. And we have an anatomy lab with two cadavers, which allows our, our students and faculty to take that class and then be able to transfer it back. So they can save a lot of money, it's a really hard class, and, and so students are able to do that here this summer and then transfer that back into their four-year institution. So that's a, that's a big thing for us. Want to make sure that, that students, teachers, and administrators know about our, our great programs that we offer, so we kind of brainstormed that, and our recruiting team came up with the idea of a, of a bus tour. And, and in the past, we've tried to go out and do road shows where we go out to the high schools, and that's really hard. And so to make it even more special, we're going out to the high schools, getting, getting them on buses and bringing them back to campus so they can see our facility. I've heard from a bunch of parents that their kids are getting recruited to other colleges around the, around the country, and they're, they're, some colleges are even putting them on an airplane and sending them down somewhere to, to go visit, and they come back with a whole bunch of T-shirts and banners and stuff. So we're going to do the same thing. We're going to go out, we invited 20 different area high schools to participate, and 19 of them signed up. So we are expecting about 600 students, and it'll have, take place on the 19th and 21st of March. The students will come here, they'll meet with faculty, they'll see the facilities, and they'll, they'll go home with T-shirts and, and other cool stuff. And, and so we'll, we'll track that, we'll look at their performance and, and kind of see how that goes and see if we're going to do it again. But, but that's a, that's a really interesting, for us, because we, we can talk to them about financial aid, we can talk to them about the Idaho Launch Program, we can talk to them about foundation scholarships, and make sure that they're all well-aware of that, because even going out in the high schools now, we're finding out that the counselors and the students and the parents don't know about all those Idaho Launch Programs and all, all the other programs. They don't know how to fill out their FAFSA, so they'll have an opportunity to come here and do that on campus on, on these bus tours. So we're, we're looking forward to those. And then, in addition to the Idaho Launch Program, the N I C Foundation announced on Monday, I want to say, no, Friday, that they've released 1.1 million in scholarships, and that 1.1 million in scholarships, it's not awarded by the foundation, the foundation gives the money to our financial aid office, so it's a blind gift from the foundation to the, the financial aid office. And then those are awarded based on the criteria established either by the, the person that donated the money or merit-based or greatest needs. And so that, that is now able to take place, and we can use that information as we're participating in the bus tour. Okay, next topic, community stakeholder engagement. N I C hosted the Idaho Spelling Bee, so this is not the, you know, they, they're, they start with spelling bees with a lot of local events around the, the North Idaho. This was the qualifier, so the folks that won this one got to go to the national competition, it's the Scripps National Spelling Bee. So the person that won this one is going to Washington, D.C. to compete. We offered all of the participants, there were 37 participants there, we offered all of them $1,000 scholarships to attend N I C. They're, you know, these, these kids are like fourth grade through eighth grade, so it'll be a day or two before they show up as students. But we offered them all $1,000 scholarships, and the winner got a $2,000 scholarship, so we hope to see them. These are the kind of students that we want here, so we're, we're putting some effort into recruiting them. Our, our N I C Engineering 223 students designed and built a, a really state-of-the-art greenhouse for the elementary school at Fernand Stem Academy, and that's going to allow those students to do some real interesting cultivation, science programs that is unique to elementary schools. They usually don't get access to that stuff, and our engineering students don't get to build that kind of stuff. So they got some really, really state-of-the-art, so it has controlled irrigation, humidity sensors, motorized air intake, grow lights and heaters, and it's all stuff that the kids can program and, and make use of as, as elementary kids. So that's, that's another good program. One of our students, I don't, I don't, I don't know that I've met her yet, Kaylee Northrup. She's a student from Lake City High School, did dual-credit in, in Lake City High School. She was just announced as the N I C's 2024 New Century Transfer Pathways Scholar out of more than 2,200 applicants nationwide. So she's get, she'll get a $2,250 scholarship. And I Googled her and found out that she was very active as a dual-credit student at Lake City High School, and there was an article in the paper from 2022 where, where she was, had, was doing research through, as a dual-credit student, and was doing really doctoral-level research as a high school student. And so a big shout-out to District 271 for developing those kinds of students that are coming to N I C. We appreciate that, and I think, I think Kaylee appreciates the experience she got at 271. N I C and U of I, Corlaine hosted the Rocket Engineer and SpaceX co-founder Tom Mueller here on campus on February 23rd. Really cool guy, down-to-earth, and, you know, he was the number-one employee at SpaceX. Elon Musk was employee number three, which is kind of a cool, nice fact to know. He talked for about an hour here and then had a, had a couple other talks in town. Really interesting fellow, and, and he's from Wallace, I want to say.
St. Mary's.
St. Mary's. St. Mary's. So a, a local kid, kind of like, if you ever seen the Rocket Boys or whatever, there was a, a thing about these, what's that?
October.
Yeah, well, the, the, the kids from West Virginia that, like, started their own...
The name of the movie is October.
Oh, so, okay, so October. But, you know, so we have our own little version of that with, you know, a kid from St. Mary's grows up and becomes a SpaceX scientist, so really, really cool to listen to him and his experiences. Workforce Training Program, you, you heard already about the, the great program that they did with the Safety Fest. But on top of that, we also submitted our, our portion of the Regional Aerospace Tech Hub grant, and we went through, I don't know, 15 different iterations of that. We're just a, we're a, we're a part of the team, we're not in charge, and so it was a constant back-and-forth between what we, what we wanted, what we needed, and what, what they could afford in the grant budget. And so we ended up with a really nice program, where we're going to do thermal, thermoplastics, machining, advanced manufacturing, and non-destructive inspection. And, and the, now, of course, this is dependent on the, the big grant getting funded, but if all this works, we'll, our, our cut of that will be about $800,000 over five years to create these programs at a combination of Workforce Training Center and Parker in order to create some really advanced manufacturing programs. So we're looking forward to that. You, you've, you met Colby now, and as the director of the Workforce Training Center, I, I just, I said, "Hey, Colby, what do you think about starting a gunsmithing class?" And I talked to some folks here, and he was more than a little excited about it. The class starts on, you know, this is like four weeks ago, five weeks ago, the class starts on Monday, fully-certified NRA instructor, and it's a, it's going to be a year-long program, a series of classes, that if, if the, if folks take all those classes, by the end of the year, they'll be certified gunsmiths. And I think we already have about 10 or 12 folks signed up for it, but there is room remaining for a couple more seats. So check out the website, it's, it was prominent, I think there's going to be a press release out on it tomorrow. So look for that if you're interested in, in gunsmithing and want to become a certified gunsmith. Just another example of how Workforce Training Center is really nimble and, and quick to respond to the needs of the community, and, you know, with a, you know, I think we got a, a gun shop on just about every street corner, so the fact that we didn't have a program already is kind of a, an aha moment for us, but thanks to Colby and the Workforce Training Center for getting that going. And again, they were highlighted in the Idaho Business Journal, check that article out, really good program, good coverage. In terms of CTE and program alignment, we're continuing to work on efforts to expand our dual-credit opportunities between Parker and K-Tech. We added to the existing K-Tech CTE program partnership that already includes HVAC collision repair by expanding dual-credit to include our new construction management program. So by combining that program, it, we added 34 new students to our total, which is 991 students doing dual-credit, but, but 34 of those are a result of this new program in construction management. And we're, we're putting the final touches on our career and technical education installations. You remember back, a few months back, we got $1.3 million, give or take, covering seven different career and technical education programs, one of the bigger grants that we've received lately. And all of those things have to be on hand and mostly installed by the 1st of March, so they're finishing those projects up. I'll just draw your attention to the, if you have a chance, go look at the new SIMS stuff that, once it gets installed in, in our health science area. And then our graphic design program is going to have a real state-of-the-art design lab in the, I don't know what the name of the building is, the old industrial arts at the end of the soccer field. So it's, it's going to be a really state-of-the-art program. In terms of transfer programs now, all of our academic transfer programs have been reviewed. Those are the traditional associate's degree programs, they've all been reviewed, and to make sure that we're in alignment with our four-years. So what we want to make sure is that those, if a student comes here, participates in one of our transfer programs, that they can actually transfer and start as a junior at one of the four-year institutions. And so those, you know, we, we serve about, you know, at least four, four-year programs, plus, you know, some go to Eastern Washington, some go to Washington State, so four, maybe six programs, that we've got to track all those and make sure that what we're teaching, the curriculum we have actually aligns, and we'll get those students through the first two-years credit when they transfer. And so they've done all that, and now they've identified some shortfalls in our curriculum, so we're working on correcting those, and, and then making sure that all the backend stuff, what we want to do is get to the, an automated process so that the students can say, "I want to be a computer scientist, I'm going to start at N I C, and I'm going to transfer to U of I," and be able to click on that and figure out all the courses that they need here so that they can transfer there. And those are, those might be different than if you wanted to be a computer scientist and transfer to Washington State. And so making sure that all that stuff is lined out and very easy for the students to follow, so they don't end up wasting time and money on the classes that they take here. And I, so I talked about the, the committee work, but faculty also have a requirement to serve as advisors, and one of the things we noticed was that there's really, and I'll credit Kathleen for this, there has not been a training program to teach faculty how to be advisors. They learn how to teach their content area, but they don't learn how to be advisors. And so we're working to come up with a training program to teach them how to really do a good job of advising, and making sure they know all the resources that are available to the students, so that we can get them the, the right help they need when they need it and get them pointed in the right direction. And so, so that's ongoing work. Continuing work reviewing those articulation and transfer agreements. It's, it's not enough just to know what the students have to take to get there, we really want to formalize all of those articulation and transfer agreements so that when the student completes here, it's a seamless process for them to transfer. And then finally, under transfer programs, I, I met, I don't know, 10 days ago or so with representatives from Heckler Mining, and they, they are struggling to find employees, because, you know, if you think back, you know, when I was a kid here, mining and timber were the, were king. And it's, you know, everybody thinks that mining and timber died out, but they're still a very strong part of our economy and strong, there's a strong requirement for skilled workers in those areas. And they can't, the University of Idaho canceled its mining engineering program about 15 years ago, 10 or 15 years ago. And so they're, how do they hire mining engineers if we're not producing them? And so they've asked us to, to do a, create a transfer program and work with... And so they've asked us to do a, create a transfer program and work with the Montana Tech and South Dakota School of Mines to create hard rock mining engineers. And so we do the first two years here and then they transfer there. But while we're doing that, we're simultaneously working with the University of Idaho to get a program started for hard rock mining that we could start up here and pilot it up here. That, you know, we need about 10 or 15 graduates a year. We don't need 200. And so how can we start a program like that, start it up here? I don't know if any of you have been to Moscow, but there's not a whole lot of mining going on in Moscow. And so if we start it up here, we can work directly with the mines and make sure that everything, and it's just, it's not just engineers. They need machinists, they need mechatronics folks, and they need accounting techs. They don't need CPAs, they need accounting techs. And so all those things we cover. And so building a tighter relationship with them and starting to really work with them. And they're willing to go out and basically help us recruit students into those programs, which is a really good partnership. So stand by for more on that. But I think it's important to know that mining and timber industry are still strong here. They're still an important part of our economy and that we need to be responsive to the needs of those industries in training people and making sure that students know that careers, not just jobs, but real careers exist in all those areas. In terms of support to student athletes, I'll give kudos to our NIC wrestling team. So I had discussions early on with some of the old-school wrestlers. John Owens was still alive, Doug Parker, and a couple of other folks. And they were very concerned about our wrestling program, and they wanted to make sure that it didn't die. And one of the guys, I won't attribute it, but I rib him about it now, said, you'll never return to the excellence of the, you know, the 80s when we were national championships. Well, good news is this year, under head coach Derek Booth and assistant coach Cooper Thomas and Bryce Parsons, who's the brother of our soccer, women's soccer coach, have advanced the team to the national championship. 10 of our students qualified for a national championship. And that starts on Friday. The tournament starts on Friday and goes through Saturday. So we're looking forward to, last year, we had five All-American athletes out of that. This year, we have 10. 10 of our students are qualifying for the national championship. So I think we're, we may not be quite back to the prominence of the 80s, but we're doing pretty good. And we continue to have meetings with SWAC. SWAC is struggling because we're so spread out, it's very hard to get from one school to the other. Travel takes time, students are away. And we're working with the NJCAA to maybe re-apportion some of the, or realign the regions so that we're able to get to schools that are easier to play and have that kind of like a, kind of a super league that we can work in. So we're scheduled to meet with them mid-March in Salt Lake City. I think Athletic Director and I will go to that meeting and represent us and try to try to work on a better alignment system. So next topic is academic freedom and free speech. As you heard from Kathleen Miller-Green, the faculty are working to create a new college policy on academic freedom and free speech. And that's an important part of the process. The faculty are professionals. And they, we've had classes on this, we've had workshops on what is free speech, what is free expression. And getting the faculty to participate in that formulation of the policy is really critical part of the process. And so they're working on that and will continue to work. Sometimes it takes a little longer than you'd like, but they're doing a great job. And if they come up with a policy that they can buy into, it's going to be far more effective in the long run. And a part of that is the fact, is the course evaluation policy. Because previously, courses got evaluated very, very periodically once a faculty member had tenure. And so having every student have an opportunity to evaluate every course from every faculty member and have that evaluation be meaningful in a developmental way for the faculty, how do I teach better? Because that's what they're interested in. So how do we develop that process? So the faculty are working on that as well. And I think, you know, we're making progress on it. I won't, I won't set a deadline for that, but they are making serious progress on that. And these are really emotional topics for faculty. They really, they want to do it, they want to do it well. And so we're relying on them to participate. Strategic planning, Sarah Garcia is going to provide an in-depth update on that later, or a more in-depth update on that later. But we are making significant progress on our strategic planning. And then in general comments, we met this on the February 12th, the week of February 12th, with our legislators in Boise. And just so everybody knows, it was not at all a normal education week at the legislator. The legislators were confused about how things are going. It's not, it's not normal. The whole budgeting process is kind of on its ear. So we're working our way through that, trying to figure out how we can get things done. I'll give kudos to Mike Wagner, who has been helping to, I won't say lobby, because I think you have to be registered as a lobbyist. So I won't, I won't say you're lobbying, but advocating on behalf of the college for things like our post-academy. So we have fully outfitted post-academy, which really helps our law enforcement community serve the community. And so we're working on that, and there'll be more details coming out throughout the meeting. And Chair Wagner, with that, I conclude my comments. Subject to your questions.
Okay. Any questions? Go ahead.
Dr. Swain, you mentioned the transfer programs that have been reviewed. Does that mean articulation agreement goals have been defined for those that have shortfalls? So you mentioned some shortfalls. How many agreements are being discussed when those shortfalls are fulfilled?
Well, so I said, so what I said was the transfer programs have been reviewed, and we've looked at those to figure out if there are curriculum changes. And so now it's a matter of looking at, are there, do we change the course objectives or do we need new or different courses? So that's, that part of the process is not done yet. And so I can't tell you yet. And it's going to differ by, you know, if you're, again, if you're transferring from computer science at NIC to computer science at U of I, the requirements differ than if you're going to WSU. So those, it's more, it sounds easy, but it's more complex, and we're not at the point where I can give you that report. But we will, we're working on that, and we'll provide that when we have the data.
He still has the floor. Yeah, so, well, I guess. Is there, I mean, I guess you'll get back to me when you have more of the data, but is, are you at the, when do you anticipate being at the stage to say, your example with computer science, that if you come here for computer science to get an AA or whatever it is, then, you know, you can go on to U of I or WSU or something else? When?
So some of that is easy and some of it's hard. And so I don't want to give you a date, but that's, it's an ongoing process. And we, it's not just identifying the curriculum changes that need to take place. We're also working on creating the backend software so that as those things adapt, that students can, can click on it and see what courses are offered here that will transfer there. And so it's an ongoing process. It's not, it's not a quick process because it's something the faculty are doing as part of their committee assignment. It's not something a full-time person does. And really, the faculty have to do a lot of that work because it is curriculum and that is the role of faculty. There's not a whole lot of differences, but there are things that we want to make sure that there's no lost courses that somebody has to take.
Is the course evaluation, is it a policy or is it a procedure? And when, which one is that being worked on?
So there'll be a course evaluation policy? And there might well be a procedure that goes with that once they get there.
I feel like, okay. And then it, have all the students who submitted vaccine exemptions been responded to, whether approved or disapproved? In the nursing programs for, they have clinicals, I think it is?
You know, I, yes.
And have any been unaccommodated?
No.
Okay.
There was one student who I was contacted by her father. And it appeared to me that she had not, either not informed her father accurately or her father chose to, you know, I can't tell you that. The story that I got from the father was not accurate on its face because I know that on our website and throughout all of the programs, if there's a vaccine requirement that is clearly stated, the students are briefed on it, they sign paperwork saying they acknowledge it. And, you know, the father said, well, this is the first he's hearing about it. Well...
Is there a vaccine requirement for our program?
Not for our program, but for, they have to do clinical training.
So that's what I'm saying. So if our students need anything mandated upon them, should that come to the board or not?
No. There's, because there is nothing, there, like, the, this one incident, the...
I think we should not speak about individual instances of students. Let's keep it on a general level related to policy vaccination.
That's fine. But so the, on the, the, there's a waiver process that we have adapted and adopted, and we have not had any issue with anybody not being able to continue the programs because of vaccine requirements. Is that it?
One more question. I would, how many of NIC's partner clinics are inflicting this upon NIC students is one I'm happy for a follow-up question.
None of them. Zero.
Okay.
Are you, you're done, trustee?
Yeah, for now.
Trustee Banducci, did you have a question?
No, just a, just a comment. President Swain touched on the success of the wrestling team. And just for those that may not be averse to wrestling, as some are, that's the first time that they had won regionals in years. And the top opponent that they have in our region is Clackamas. It's a highly rated team. And we had just, in fact, shortly before that, lost to them in a duel here. And so they avenged some defeats in that regional tournament and really performed extremely well. And for those that don't know, qualifying 10 is critically important because there are only 10 weights in college wrestling. So we have a participant in every single weight at the national tournament, which, whether we win or not, or get back to the quote, "old glory" or not, that gives us as much a competitive opportunity as possible to have every, every weight competed. So that was a fine job for them. That's the first time that they'd, say, won regionals in years and have all 10 weights qualify. So that was pretty impressive. The other thing I would mention right now is the top four finishers in the regular season in basketball in the SWAC go to the playoffs. And right now, the men's basketball team is in the top four. I believe they're sitting in third.
Third place, yep.
So they have a couple more games away. But if they were to hold their spot or at least stay in the top four, they will be in the SWAC playoffs, which would then give them an opportunity to qualify for the national tournament. So both those teams are doing well. And I don't mean to slight the ladies' basketball team. They're, they're competing hard. It's been a very, bit of a challenging season for them, but I know they're growing and learning. But anyway, just a little bit extra, our student athletes are doing, doing very well.
You're finished?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I have some questions. And, oh, go ahead, Chair.
Thank you. A couple of comments. I love the bus tour. I think that's fantastic. And I love all of the newspaper articles that you brought up. It feels like there's a big change in terms of the marketing, at least the visibility for our college. It's been, there's a lot of positive, and I'm really happy to see that. And so thanks for bringing that to my attention. I haven't noticed all those, but I noticed a few. I love the numbers on enrollment. I think that's great. We should be really proud of that, and I think that's a testament to everybody that's participating in that. The mining program is pretty exciting. I didn't know about the mining, that it was still going on for a few years ago, I found out. So anyway, very happy. Thank you for your report.
Thanks.
Mr. Chair, I do have one more question, if I may, sir.
Trustee Banducci.
Nick, you mentioned two of the colleges that the mining program might work with. Is there a chance that may expand to others, like, say, the Colorado School of Mines or some of the other mining schools in what I would call the Greater Pacific Northwest?
So the, my first goal would be to have our students train in Idaho. So I think while we may, in the short term, work on articulation and transfer agreements with Montana and South Dakota, the long-term solution has to be with our own. Because we send people away, the chance that they're going to meet a significant other or find a job and come back, go down. So that we, there's too much loss. And so having that program in-house, I think, is really important. And I asked Heckla about the Colorado School of Mines and I, something, a friend of mine back in Virginia, his son attended Colorado School of Mines because they offered a petroleum engineering program. It turns out that's the focus of Colorado School of Mines, not hard rock mining. And so Heckla and the other programs up here are really hard rock mining and not, not pit mining and not petroleum. So that's, that's why they would prefer to go to Montana and South Dakota.
Chair, I have a question.
Chair Banducci, you finished?
Oh, I'm done, sorry.
Okay. Chair McKenzie.
I think sabbaticals are...
Trustee McKenzie.
...being decided on next month, or have they been decided yet?
They have not been decided yet. I believe March is typically the date for that, but they have not been decided yet.
Is that going to be a recurring report to trustees?
That, we do announce the winners of the sabbatical, yes.
No, I think it was two years ago that the sabbatical applications were included in the board book, and I would just like to see that happen this next time.
That's not part of the policy. They're, the, only the winners are announced to the board. And so we'll do that.
The winners of the sabbatical, their application or whatever could be included in the board packet, I think that'd be beneficial for the board.
I think that what we will do is make them available in, through my office, and if somebody wants to come look at them. Because there's a lot of stuff in there that I think the faculty are not, would not be, want to make public, just like their tenure packets. So those are available, we'll make those available to board members if they want to come read them, and then folks can come read them. I think that's a better solution for the faculty.
So are you saying that's a personnel record, then?
There are just some things that are appropriate to put in a board packet and some things that are not. And that's not appropriate to put in a board packet.
You have an opinion? All right.
It's an operational decision.
Yes. Well, I guess that solves it, no matter what other people think.
All right. Let's go on here, then. Mr. Chair.
I'm listening to this, and I just heard the president tell the trustee what he's going to do and not do, despite the trustee's request in good faith and was trying to figure out how to couch that request. I guess I'm trying to understand, yes, you announced the winners, and yeah, it'll be in the nick now. But I think it makes sense, and I don't know if this is where trustee McKenzie's going, but for some insight to the board, who does approve the budget, to why we're paying an instructor to go do something for a year or a semester where they're going to be out of the classroom and not teaching. So we lose a resource in the classroom for a period of time. And I think it's, it's not unreasonable to understand what they've applied for and how they've justified, and what they put in that application and what they're going to be doing, and to understand where that, where that money is being spent and to how that's going to better them, to make them a more effective instructor or to, to enhance their abilities in the classroom or to, you know, improve the learning experience for the students. That's, that's all stuff that seems to me to be reasonable in the, in the board packet for the trustees to review to see what, you know, we're supposed to review you and evaluate you. And we're, part of that is to evaluate you on the operating... you, and we're, part of that is to evaluate you on the operational decisions that you make. But yet, if we don't understand what went into making those, those decisions, and we don't understand the data and the background and the underlying reasons for those decisions, if we have no insight as to what evidence or documentation or facts were presented, it's impossible for us to evaluate you. And that, it's been an issue in the past with any of the presidents, but, so, I don't think...
Mike.
You know, if there's a thing that needs to be sanitized because of it being a personnel record, you know, maybe...
Trying to silence the trustee. The president is trying to silence the trustee.
No. Mr. Banducci, let's, let me...
Well, I'm just saying, I, I'm trying to understand what's reasonable, not reasonable here of the request, and if there's something that has to be sanitized, if there, you know, again, if there's something that constitutes a personnel record, then I understand that, you know, and if Mr. Boils needs to review it or something, but, again, I don't understand why we can't see how we're employing our instructors.
Okay, that, that's enough for now, so...
Actually, Chair, I would like to say something.
I'd like to make some comments.
Okay, and then am I getting a turn to speak after?
Yes.
Okay.
So, the issue is, you have some information that is more private.
It, it's, it's not a matter of private, it's, you know, Mr. Banducci brought up a point about reviewing the, what the faculty are doing, and I just say, I, I, I do, trustees are not experienced in what the professional development requirements are for computer science faculty or writing faculty.
Oh, oh.
And, and so, that's not your role, that's an operational role. And so, the, the faculty make that decision, that's part of their role as faculty, and they make a recommendation up through the, their department heads, their provost and me, and, and the, that's how the decision is supposed to be made. That is an operational decision, and, and that's how we do business. And that is, every college around the country, that's the way it does business, and I'm sorry that, that folks don't understand that, but that is the way business is done at a college. That is part of the shared governance structure of the college. And so, delving into operations and delving into the role of faculty is not appropriate for trustees.
Mr. Chair, I need, no, no, I need to respond. Because you just gave a nice lecture, and it was a great soundbite for the press. However, I didn't say anything about evaluating the instructor. I talked about our evaluation of you and your operational decisions as you run the college. We have to evaluate you as the president. I wasn't suggesting that we evaluate the instructor.
The decision's already made.
So that was a nice speech, and it was irrelevant to what I was talking about. But I hope that felt good. I mean, that was a nice shot back at me for supposed to be out of my lane, but I wasn't out of my lane.
Let's not get into the personal stuff here.
No, no, but it was, I wasn't out of my lane, that's a reasonable thing.
Okay.
We evaluate him, not the instructor.
My, my position, I, I'd like to speak. My position is that, from time to time, issues come up where we have the division of responsibility between the administration and the board. This sounds like something we need to take offline. I, obviously, have some good arguments and our positions, and so I'd like to discuss it with you, and what we usually do, members, is we...
Yeah.
And I've got some, a couple of other things with the ACCT consultants, and so let's go ahead and have a discussion on that, and then we'll work it, okay?
Absolutely.
We, that sounds good, I would still like to say something.
Chair, I'd like to say something, too, when I get a chance.
Go ahead.
It just occurred to me that this might be a good topic to add to our board training, so we can all have an opportunity to understand the operational issues and what, what we're talking about. Maybe add that to the agenda next time, or the next.
Yeah, depends on when that ends up happening. What I've been doing, trustee Zimmerman is meeting with him from time to time with the president, and work these in a more regular basis, and if you wanted to come to those meetings, we could certainly, as long as we don't have more than two, right?
All right.
We could do it that way, there's, it's not private. I'm just trying to expedite that and, and set up a process, and I don't want the board getting involved in administrative work, and sometimes there's a question, and we'll just resolve that.
Sounds good.
All right?
Yeah.
Do I have the floor, am I allowed to speak?
Go ahead.
Thank you, Chair Wagner, for the opportunity to say something. I think it was two, two, three years ago, I don't know, time flies, Al McLennan inserted, at a mere request of a trustee, the selected candidates in the board packet, and I was quite appreciative of that decision. And many in the community were also appreciative of that decision, to see how their taxpayer dollars is being spent. And I also want to point out that there was, going back numerous years now, this is a while, numerous years ago, but there was applicants to sabbaticals to make low-cost, or, or, what's it, what's it?
OER.
OER, which is free or low-cost textbooks, and that was what one applicant was trying to do with his sabbaticals, and I think he put in twice, as I understand, and was never chosen, for whatever reason. So I think, I put my comments in, in October, that seemed to have no response or anything, which is fine, and, I guess, and so I think we just need to look at this sabbatical policy. That's it.
Okay, let's move on here. I have some questions about the president's report. You had talked one time about maybe physicians assistants would be trained here by different other schools. Is there anything that has come along with, or gone along with that?
That's, that's really, U of I's role is, and they're, they're interested in, in doing that, I, you know, I don't want to get ahead of them, but, but they are working through that process, and I don't, I don't know where they are, but that's, that's part of the WHAMMY program, if I get that right. And, and so they're, they're working on that issue, and I, I suspect that that is one of their initiatives that they're going to the state for. And it, it makes sense, it makes sense for them to do it in Coeur d'Alene, because they have a much larger metropolitan area and larger hospitals than they do in Moscow. There's, I don't think there's any way that they could do a physician assistant program in Moscow, there's just not, it's, it's not a big enough place, so.
Great. And then, and it sounds like you have an, like, an app that you've created for transferring, so, and this is kind of new.
We haven't, not yet, that's, that's on, that's part of the, part of the project in works, yeah.
So you can sit and say, okay, I'm taking these courses, so when I transfer, I, I'm not throwing away courses, and that sounds like a really good deal.
Yep.
Because it's, I know from my personal experience, so this is, that I ran into that, I took a bunch of classes, and then I went to Oregon State, and they're like, oh, you should have taken these other classes.
Right.
And they caused me lots of problems.
Right.
Okay, and then, it sounds like we may have, and I know we talked about this in the budget meetings, and all the schools talked about it, in this fall, the launch, eighty-four, eighty-five hundred dollars?
Eight thousand.
Eight thousand?
Yeah.
Will be included, and do we have any further, any more idea of how many extra people might show up?
So it's, it's really tough, because the, the numbers right now, I think people are looking at the, if I recall correctly, it's in the neighborhood of 250 students that have applied for launch and been, they have a contingent award. But there's another 450 that have started the process but haven't been awarded because they haven't completed the application. But keep in mind that we average about 650 new students every year. So 450 out of launch doesn't necessarily mean, and they just, they aren't, they aren't able to track this data, that doesn't mean we're going to go to a normal 600 plus 400 more, it just, and so they don't know, is that, is that 400 students that have applied for launch and make, show up with launch money, and, and an additional 200, so we're back at six, or are we going to be at 1,000? And they just don't have resolution on that, yet.
Right, because the real question I'm asking is, what if that 1,000 shows up?
So we were, we were discussing that today, and that's actually, some, some folks in the legislature have asked that question, and the, I'd say if you go back to 2010, we were at 6,000 students, and now we're just under 4,000. So we have the capacity to, we, we have the proven capacity to handle 6,000 students. It would cause a surge in adjunct hiring, short-term hiring kind of things to accommodate if we get to 1,000, but I, I don't think it's unreasonable for us to be able to pull that off.
Okay, so you're, you're saying you think it's a low risk?
Yeah, I, I think that the challenge we may have is, like, you know, nursing is going to have 40 students apply, and if all of a sudden we have 80 students apply, we're not going to be able to accommodate them, at least not initially. So, so it's those kinds of problems, in terms of total numbers, we can accommodate. Specific programs might have limits on the enrollment numbers, just based on facilities, welding, we only have so many welding stations, so there, you know, machining, there's only so many machines, so, so there may be specific areas that, where we're not able to accommodate exactly what the students want, but in terms of general capacity, we can handle 6,000 students, and we've had some growth in our facility since then, so easily should be able to handle.
Yeah, that's, that sounds like the best we can do right now, until you get more specific information.
Correct.
But we literally, you understand what we're discussing here, we literally may have the problem of too many students.
Oh, we won't have that problem. We won't have, I, we, we're going to offer CSI and CEI the, to take any students they can't handle.
Mr. Chair, if you're done with your questions, sir.
Let's see, no, I have one more thing.
After you're done, sir.
Okay. So, and I've noticed you're spending a lot of time improving, I hesitate to use the word "process," but that's really what it is, the processes in the school, you're making an investment in the business processes. In the past, I've had some concerns that that wasn't done much in the past, and I'm very pleased that I'm hearing you continually work those issues.
Right, thank you.
Okay, so thanks.
Thanks.
Go ahead.
Well, it's been alluded to earlier about the work with Post and about that Representative Harmon, the co-chair of JFAC, has asked for additional information regarding the 12 million, and we've been assembling that data, and I know Sarah Garcia has been helpful with that, too, and you've been working it. We had two other requests, and one of them comes to mind now with the discussion we just had, as we're thinking about the potential surge of students through the launch, particularly in the nursing program. One of those asks were for some additional funds, because we are struggling to compete against the marketplace for instructors and stuff like that. I haven't really heard where we feel we are with the cybersecurity and the nursing, those were two of our three kind of asks, we had the workshop with the legislators and stuff like that. Have we had any feedback on those, or any, any thought on those? Is that something that we think is maybe going to happen or not, or where we're at?
So, no, we haven't had any feedback on that or not, the, the one thing that they were interested in was the, the Post facility, the, it didn't seem like the, the nursing got much traction yet, but, you know, who knows how that's going to pan out? And just keep in mind, cybersecurity is not an instructional program, it's the cyber defense of the college, because we were hacked, trying to keep us from being hacked again, and that was, as you know, you know, Coeur d'Alene got hacked just recently, so.
Well, we got lucky with the ran, because we didn't have to pay, but they, we don't know what their story was.
I don't know, and, and we may not know the whole story. But, yeah, that's, that was, we asked for 750, excuse me, 750,000 for improving our cyber defense, and about a half a million for increasing salaries and hiring new folks. We have the capacity now, regardless of, of launch, we have the capacity to increase our nursing program and many of our health science programs by about 50%, but it takes extra faculty, because there's a mandatory 10-to-1 student-teacher ratio in many of those programs, and so we have to hire more faculty. The faculty command a higher salary than what we pay on, on our, you know, off our salary scale, so working that out, we, we figured it was half, 500, $550,000, if I recall, something in that neighborhood, so. We can work that into budget, but, well, you know, it'll probably be a incremental change over time.
Well, you fundamentally, thank you for the information, and fundamentally, the answer for, I guess, for the bottom line is, while we're getting some traction with the Post, and there's additional interest, and we're providing all that, the cybersecurity, which, yeah, was, is not an instructional thing, but still, to keep Ken happy and to keep us going there, and for, to be competitive, to hire nursing, but it doesn't sound like I hadn't heard anything, that's why I was wondering if we'd really gotten any, you know, we briefed the House and Senate Education Committees, we briefed JFAC, and I didn't know if it had just been kind of crickets on everything but Post.
I, I think it's been crickets, and I, and I think, on, on top of that, sort of, we didn't follow the rules, we were told not to ask for any additional money, and, you know, what I learned is if you don't ask for it, you don't get it, and so asking for the 12 million was kind of, we're, we're not really following what we were...
Well, they didn't throw us out of the room.
But, so, so we asked for that, and if we get, if we get the 12 million for that, then we'll figure out how to fund the other two, but...
Well, I'm with you, I think we need to continually press our point if we're going to advocate for it.
Well, the, the important thing is, you know, those other schools are, are asking for money, and if, if we don't, you know, we, we have a need in our community, we have the capacity to do it, we need some funding, and our, our taxpayers are paying that money, and it's going to somebody else. And so I think getting it back here is really important.
Well, we had at least one cycle where we were kind of on the short end of it, where everybody got more money than us anyway, so if they were just to bring us up to par...
Right.
You know, it's a few more million right there.
Correct.
So, all right, you're done?
Yes, sir, I am, thank you.
Okay, and in fact, I think what you told me was that we had, other schools have gotten money for the last three years, and we haven't...
Got nothing.
So hopefully, that'll give us some moral leverage to get some money, that, because there's many things we can do, and the area's growing quickly, and we need more capacity.
Right.
Well, we are talking to our legislators, I mean, we had lunch with, what, seven of them on, was that Tuesday?
I think there were more than that, I think there were 11.
On Wednesday, on the, on the Tuesday for lunch?
Tuesday.
With the reps?
At the taco place, I think there were 11.
I can't remember. I know we didn't, we weren't able to catch the Sanders, because there were some conflicts there, and I knew Carl couldn't make it, and I don't think we got Heather or Sage, but I think we had seven, anyway, it doesn't matter, yeah, we might have had more, I'm trying to think who all was there now, but we had a pretty good number, which was, which was encouraging, because it was kind of short notice, as we're trying to ask them to help advocate.
Hey, you're finished?
I am, I'm sorry, sir.
Okay, so, and in terms of the in-between information I've been getting from JFAC and from Carl and some other folks, the, what I'm hearing is, yeah, they're getting close to the end, but they're in the midst of the, like, the discussion...
Heavy arm wrestling.
Horse trading. They're in the midst of the horse trading, and there's only so much money, and then they'll see who gets what money, and then, and then they'll let us know. And again, they had a target of being done in about two weeks, but historically, they haven't made that, but by the end of March, I would think we'd, it'd be highly likely we'd know. Okay? Anything else? No questions from Brad?
It's been a lively discussion.
Okay. And, and then, so I think we go to the next step, strategic plan update.
Yep, and Sarah is prepared to give us a quick update on that.
Good evening, Chair Wagner, trustees, and community members. I just want to get, try to give you a little update about where, how we, where we've got to and what's upcoming on the strategic plan side, so I am going to start with, in November of 2023, we began the work to create a new five-year strategic plan. We engaged the Collaborative Brain Trust as our planning consultants, and we assembled a strategic planning steering committee, I missed the word committee on my slide, I apologize, to assist with the development of the plan and work in a consensus-building manner. Our strategic planning steering committee is composed of representatives from the college constituent, all, three of the college constituencies, leadership, student leadership, and each employee classification, including instruction, student services, and administrative services. One of the reasons we chose the Collaborative Brain Trust was they had a deep experience with community colleges, they pretty much consult only for community colleges, and based on our initial discussions with them, we determined that the best way to move forward would be in two parts and with three phases. So, Part A started in November and will finish in April of this year. The end of Part A will be when we have the overarching strategic... in April of this year. The end of Part A will be when we have the overarching strategic goals that we'll bring before the board, which will be at the April board meeting. Part B will start after those overarching goals are approved, and it will focus on the development of institution-wide objectives and an actual, and an action plan with measurements and specific direction to take in order to meet those original overarching goals. Both of these parts rely very heavily on the three phases of work that is occurring, and it's all kind of happening simultaneously. The discovery phase is where the consultants have gathered both internal and external data, qualitative and quantitative. The second phase is portfolio development and planning assumptions, and really what that does is it takes a lot of the data that we have pulled together in the discovery phase and using that to create a foundation for the plan, looking for trends, themes, challenges, and opportunities. And then, as we synthesize and with the help of the Brain Trust, all of those themes and all of that information, we will use that to set goals and make recommendations, which will be very specific, again, very specific and measurable. So what have we done so far? Together, the committee members and the consultants have agreed to a foundation for our work. That includes a purpose statement, a set of duties and responsibilities, and some guiding principles. We have gathered internal, external, quantitative data to identify data trends, both future and past. Our own internal data team provide a large amount of data to the consultants, and the consultants themselves gathered external data both from national, state, and local resources to use in our analysis. Together, the committee and the consultants created a list of internal and external stakeholders that we were going to, that we asked to contribute thoughts to the process. Over three very busy days, we held twenty-six listening sessions that were facilitated by the consultants and where we listened to our community. The consultants synthesized this information, and the result was this little graph. So, over the, as we looked at all of the qualitative and quantitative data, really, there were six large themes that emerged in that data. So, of course, students is at the top and center of our focus, our community and external partners, marketing enrollment and the student journey, institutional planning and effectiveness, our systems, processes, and culture, programs, pathways, and educational partnerships, which in, those are some of the things that Dr. Swain was talking about during his president's report with the mining programs and some of the other things that we're doing. We're working on programs and pathways and partnerships. So we're already doing some of this work. And then also talking about center operations. How do we include the centers that are not part of the main campus? So these are the overarching themes that have come out of, that will be instrumental in creating the next version of the strategic plan. And so, where are we now? In January, we had an onsite committee meeting where the consultants shared with us the graphic that I just shared with you, where they talked about the listening session themes, and they gave us a very comprehensive overview of their preliminary findings on the data trends. At the end of that meeting, we had a brainstorming session about two of those six circles that we just saw, center operations and programs, and pathways and educational partnerships. It was fun. It was very energetic. It was very exciting. We talked, we got all riled up about, well, some of the things that we've talked about before is, is we have a student, our ASNC president, who is a computer science student. What does he need to go to U of I, and what classes does he need to have to transfer, and what does that pathway look like for him, and how do we communicate that better to the students? So it was really energetic, fun, and exciting, and it really led the committee to look forward to the next steps in this process. Speaking of next steps, the very next step is going to be a virtual meeting in March where the consultants will join us over Zoom and share a little bit more as they continue to dive deeper into the data, a little bit more about what they've found. And then, in April, there will be, the team will be here for two days, and we will have two half-day sessions with the consultants and the Strategic Planning Committee to develop that set of overarching goals to bring to you, the trustees, in, at your April meeting. I meant to have another slide on here, so I apologize. I want to give a big thank you to my co-chair, Sherry Simkins, and her assistant, Amber, as well as the marketing and communications and web team. We were able to create a strategic planning page on our website, and I wanted to have the URL on the page, but it's nic.edu slash planning slash strategic dash planning. No, long one, but we'll, well, I'll make sure it gets in the packet so that you can find it if you need to find it. It has all of, it has almost all of the information that I shared with you tonight is also on that website, and we do monthly updates of what's going on with the team. And lastly, I'd just like to thank everyone who participated in the listening sessions. It was very helpful and allowed us to really listen to the community. And with that, I will answer any questions.
But I think that, let everybody know that.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
All right, Sarah, kind of a smart aleck question in a way.
Okay.
Looking at the six bubbles, what's not in that? I mean, as I'm reading the topics, it's pretty much a global ten-thousand-foot view of every possibility of the college. I mean, what didn't we throw in with the kitchen sink?
Yeah, Chair Wagner, trustee Vanducci, that is typically what happens with a strategic plan. I mean, if you, if you look at strategic plans across community colleges, there are a lot of very common themes, and it does cover a lot of stuff, but what we will do is, those will be goals, but then we will determine within those goals what's most important to our institution, and that's where that refinement of the data will come in, and where we will set the objectives and the specific measurables to achieve those objectives. Yes?
That's a full elephant. I'm done, yes.
Okay, you're done? Okay. So, I really like strategic planning. I think it's really important. So, it sounds like you've made a lot of progress. You're starting at concepts and then breaking it down into the pieces of the organization and then break it down. Now, you're calling a goal, what needs to be achieved, what the end point you want to get to, and an object. I'm asking a technical question, sorry.
Okay.
Because I'm used to being a project manager of like a hundred people working for me and that type of stuff, so, and working in big corporations. So we would say a goal is what the business output or objective we want to get to, and then we would say a, an objective is the process we would use to get there.
Similar.
Similar?
Similar. When we talk about goals, our goals are very large goals, so it's providing affordable access to students in our region. There's a million ways you can do that, and a million different strategies you can get there, but that's important to us. That's part of our mission. That's part of what we do, is provide affordable access. So, then that objectives and then the measurements and all those pieces, those steps that we're going to do, we decide what's most important and where we're going to start, and then we, because it's a five-year plan. There may be some things we do the first year and some things wait for the second or third.
Sure, you're prioritizing it. You can't do it all at once.
Yes.
That's standard, good business management processes, right? Okay, so I'm very pleased about this because when I came on board a year ago, I looked at it, because I have architected companies and worked in corporate and all that stuff, and there's been a lot of pieces that were missing, and it seems like every month or two, what happens is another piece gets put in place. So that is very encouraging. So, in fact, in terms of some of the ACCT portions of it with the board, we were down to one thing, and there was supposed to be a document in here, and we'll need to pick it up next time. There was a goal for, set up for strategic planning, and we were going to adopt that and apparently didn't get in the packet, so we'll do it next time. That's not a big deal. And so, anyway, it looks like you're making a whole roadmap for getting to those goals. And so, the, President Swain, you had talked about what the outputs were going to be.
We haven't gotten to that point yet, but yeah.
Yeah, like a facility plan?
Correct.
And can you give me a short list or list of?
The components, those are component plans for the strategic plan, the facilities, IT?
We've referred to them in the past as, I'm sorry, Chair Wagner, we've referred to those in the past as supporting plans. So you'll have an enrollment plan, a facilities plan, an IT plan, a staffing plan. So you'll have all of these plans, but they need the strategic plan to be in place first because you don't want to build a facility until you know what you need to build it for.
Right. We had discussed some things and said we couldn't go forward with them because the strategic plan's not in place, right? Otherwise, we might be building the wrong thing and wasting a lot of money, and we don't want to do that. Okay, so this is exciting to me, and I'm seeing more and more, like I said, we're getting all the pieces in place in terms of where the administration, working with the board, is upgrading and modernizing all the management processes is what it looks like to me.
We're trying.
Okay. Any further questions? Okay, next we have the risk management update. Sorry, this thing's kind of narrow. I assume you can, you folks can hear me. My voice carries pretty good, but I need to probably work more about this, right? But I don't want to be kissing it either, so we'll see what happens. Okay? Any further questions? I think the answer was, was no. So, thank you very much. This is fantastic.
We're under risk management then.
Oh, same, same, same. Yes.
Same team.
Same team, okay.
I'm back. So, good evening. This is more so than an overview or an update on risk management. It's kind of an overview of, you know, where we need to head in risk management. So one of the many things that we do need to bring back into focus post-COVID is a comprehensive and structured risk management program. The goal of our risk management program is fairly obvious, but I'm going to go ahead and state it. It's to protect our ability to reach our strategic goals and objectives. And as we are moving forward with a strategic plan, we're in an ideal place to also ramp up and set up a strong risk management process on campus as well. So I want to share with you, this is a list of top ten risks in higher education as reported by members of the United Educators. United Educators is a, an insurance company that supports, specifically supports higher education, and these are risks as reported by members of that group. So data security is actually the number one risk identified currently. Seventy-three percent of the respondents in the survey identified that as a concern and a risk in their institutions, and that's an eight percent increase over last year. Last year, that was number two, and enrollment was number one. So data security has become much more important to these, to these groups. Recruitment and hiring, operational pressures, student mental health, which appeared on the report for the first time last year, and remains in the same place in fifth place or in the fifth slot this year as well. New to this year's report, to this risk list this year is funding, and that funding is inclusive of all types of funding, federal funding, state funding, tuition, and charitable giving. So there is a risk to the institutions where they're seeing pressure on funding. Facilities and deferred maintenance is also a concern. We've seen what's happened here with money from the state on deferred maintenance, and we see what's happening this year in the legislature with attempts to fund some deferred maintenance at the K-12 level as well. So it's a common problem. Regulatory and legal compliance is always going to be on a top-ten list for risk, Title IX, and external pressures. The survey also noted some emerging or evolving risks that we should be thinking about or that are most likely going to show up on this list in the future, and those include artificial intelligence and other emerging technologies. Student mental health is going to most likely grow or go higher up on the list, and public distrust in education. So, what is risk management? It's a structured business process designed to identify, evaluate, and respond to risk that could affect the college's ability to achieve its strategic goals and objectives. As risks are not static, and we need to make sure that we're doing periodic reviews and updates, so it should be a continuous evaluation and improvement process. I have a lot of work ahead of me here. So the first step in any risk management program is identifying risk. Many, if not all, of the risks that we saw on that top-ten list are applicable to North Idaho College, and I would say that based on our discussions so far this evening, that you will see that we're already working on some of those areas and issues, not directly as a risk management target, but we're aware that there are challenges for the college. As the example on this slide shows, that that top risk priority of enrollment and retention really kind of hits multiple different types of risk. It involves strategic risk, financial risk, operational risk, and reputational risk. So there's a lot of crossover in a lot of the risks, which makes the evaluation, which is the next step, interesting. So, after we identify the risks, then we have to assess and evaluate them and really prioritize them. So that process involves determining the impact and likelihood of the risk, the immediacy of the risk, looking at the interdependence of the risks, and then creating a matrix and scoring and prioritizing the risks. For example, if we identified something as a compliance risk, grants, financial aid, any other of those types of risks, you could have a scale where the highest severity of the risk could be the risk of losing the program completely. So if you, if you don't, if you're noncompliant, you could lose the program. On the low end of the scale, it could be a fine or a minor adjustment to how you, or something inconsequential, so a minor legal penalty or something like that. On the finance side, obviously, risk would be mostly monetary. It's either going to be a percentage impact to the budget or a dollar impact, so that's how you would identify the severity of the risk.
Chair.
When you say lose the program, is that like, like, risk for a specific like course or a risk, lose the program with the insurer?
So if you're, if you were noncompliant with a federal regulation and it were, and it were a severe example of that, you could lose the funding and not be able to continue as a participant in the program.
Like a Pell Grant or something?
Pell Grant, Head Start. Okay. And then, the last piece is the implementation. So, once you have done the risk assessment process, which is usually a matrix or a scoring process so that you can create that level of priority, we would work on creating strategies to reduce or mitigate those most severe risks. Part of that process is assigning ownership and a timeline for accomplishing that, determining if we need to allocate resources, and then, this is the piece where you guys come in, where we would track and report on the progress. So, this is a recurring report for this year saying this is something we need to establish and get set up. Next year, when I come and speak in front of the board, it will be, these are the risks we've identified, and this is the progress we've made on them. So, to summarize or to finish, I would say, risks can be the result of human error, illegal or unethical behavior, or external factors. The goal of a risk assessment and management process is to help. process is to help anticipate, monitor, and manage potential risk, reduce workplace accidents, and ensure proper oversight. And that concludes that report.
Thanks, Chair.
Do we have any questions? Anybody? No questions?
We want to take a quick break. It's been almost six hours.
Colton read my mind. I was sitting here already thinking the same thing. I would like to take a 10-minute recess, and everybody can get some rest and do whatever they have to do. And so we will get started at 7:57, okay?
We're on.
Are we ready to go? Okay, let's get back here, and we've still got a ways to We have a good problem. We've had so much going on, it's taken a long time to get through everything. Also, my understanding is there's still some problems with what we needed to do on the minutes. So I want to make a motion that we postpone the consent agenda till the next special or regular meeting. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Mr. Chair, may I ask?
Question?
Oops, sorry.
Then you open it up for discussion.
Go ahead, discussion.
Well, that's why I'm asking, if we're, a motion is second to postpone, does it still allow for questions or discussion? Because I do have a comment about the consent agenda on Tab 7.
Motion is regarding postponing?
Yeah, the motion is not for that. It's just about postponing it. And I'll tell you what I intend. We need to get these done. We're not able to get it all done tonight, and I'm going to ask for a special meeting for next week. We need to get through these minutes, and not all the information is there, and there's too much to do tonight. So that's what I'm asking.
Okay, let's ask the question differently. Do we have a, can we make a comment or can we say anything at this point about, because I'm not prepared to approve Tab 7 as it is anyway. So I need further discussion or further work on Tab 7.
Well, if we?
I've looked at it further. So now, not now, but if we do the special meeting, I'm not going to be prepared to approve the consent agenda with Tab 7 even at the special meeting. That's what I'm telling you. I need, I believe Tab 7 needs work, so I want to discuss it. I've looked at it some more, and I'm not satisfied.
Let's postpone 1 through 6 and then discuss 7.
Hang on. Trustee, McKenzie, yes, it's late.
You want me to say, we could just postpone 1 through 6 and then discuss 7?
Is that what you're talking about, trustee Banducci?
I think that's what he's wanting.
Mr. Chair, what I'm telling you now is if we do nothing at this point, and these tabs, 1 through 7, come to us at the special meeting as they are, I am going to oppose Tab 7, and I will have comments, and we will have foregone the opportunity to look at it prior to that special meeting.
I?
Any other discussion? I'd be willing to, like I said, amend my original motion.
Just withdraw it?
I would like to withdraw my motion and make a motion. I motion that we postpone, and that means we have to handle it at the next meeting, postpone approving tabs 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, and 6, and go ahead and discuss Tab 7. Do I have a second?
I will second that.
Any further discussion?
Can, I think, I have a, I think it still needs a friendly amendment to that motion with the intent of getting suggested edits for that meeting in the board packet. Because even the McKenzie suggested edits, there's a paragraph that was erroneously included in this board packet. It was different than the hard copy that I distributed on the Wednesday one. So it was, it was basically, yeah, I printed out, since it wasn't included in the prior board packet, I kept working on it, and.
But doing?
So, I'm saying, I'm saying these tabs, like, we're going to have another board meeting to adjust, focus on the minutes, and we're going to include all trustee inputs on them, is what you're saying. We're going to do, yes?
Yes.
Okay.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair, if I may, just?
Go ahead.
Clarification of what you and trustee McKenzie just, I believe, agreed to. Are you suggesting that the special meeting, we're going to work on these things, or were you proposing at the special meeting that everything was already going to be at that point for approval? So is the special meeting going to be a working meeting, or are we going to talk about some of this now in advance of that meeting to try to get there?
Half of the problem, Chair, if I may?
I'm done. Go ahead, sir.
Go ahead.
I think half of the problem, Todd, is, or trustees, is that the suggested edits to really all of these tabs, 1 through 6, are not just for easy review for our board to discuss and have a conversation over. There's a lot of, a lot of them have either minor edits, which is thank goodness, or have a lot of either deletions, like on Tab 4, or have some additions, as the president held up the whole page as the last board meeting. So I think just, I don't anticipate the special board meeting, well, it'll be a lot easier with a populated board packet.
Yeah, we need, we need all the different versions in the board packet for the meeting. And there's a lot, let me explain what's been going on. There's been a lot of work on this. We had the ACCT meeting last week. We talked about the minutes. I worked with ACCT and consultants. We put together some kind of guidelines because we needed to clean up the format, et cetera, of the minutes, and no disrespect to anybody, it's just a learning experience. I was supposed to meet with the board clerk, and I was unable to do that, to work on these. So, and I have met and talked with trustee McKenzie only on these, and there's still some work that needs to be done. So we need to make sure all the versions get in there. And then what we need to do, hopefully, is expedite it, because we have some addition, the old minutes, we have some new information that the board clerk has provided that's all good.
Thank you very much for that.
And then we have some?
Well done.
Rewrites by, or some changes that are suggested by trustee McKenzie, and we just need to plow through those and get them done. So we, I think, I think where we are in answering the question from trustee Banducci, it's been done, and we think we have a pretty good set. I haven't seen it all, obviously, but with the guidelines that we've developed, and hopefully, we can just go look at those and then go through a piece at a time. We're going to use the process a piece at a time, and have everybody look at it, and then we're going to approve it, just to get it done.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Then, would you like to entertain my comments on Tab 7 tonight, or would that, is that appropriate for tonight?
Well, I think the motion was to do 1 through 6, to postpone them and do them next week.
Okay.
And so that means we can go ahead and do 7.
Okay, so we've got a motion, we've got a second, then we probably need to take a vote. a vote.
Right.
We'll come back and we'll talk about tab seven.
So, let's see what we've got. Trustee Corkhill.
Yes.
Yes.
Trustee Mackenzie.
Yes.
Trustee Banducci.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, five zero, it passes. Okay? And we'll, we'll go through this and we'll get it done, because the, my, my belief is we have done a lot of work. We've got something that's pretty good, but it's, we don't have it available to us, and so we'll just focus on it and get it done next week. Okay? Thank you. So, now, we have tab seven. Any comments on tab seven contents?
Mr. Chair, sir.
Trustee Banducci.
I went back and looked at tab seven and reread it a few times and molded over. It was a little bit of a deja vu. I've had some interest in the continuous professional service contract since I've been a trustee, as Sarah Garcia can attest to. I'm a fiduciary by trade and by practice and by job every day, and there's certain best practices, and I have never felt that we've had those best practices in this area. Once upon a time, Chris Martin tells me that we're going to put out for bid regarding our auditor. And I said, okay, Chris, why are we doing that? Well, just because it's been forever since we did it. And I said, well, that's a pretty willy-nilly approach. He goes, yeah, it just seems like it's time to do it. And so, that's when we transitioned to Aid Bailey from Magnuson McHugh, and then we've done it. I have never been comfortable with that, and as I look at these different topics, banking, attorney, architect, auditor, insurance, I'm not satisfied with that process at all. And I don't like the fact that it says that we'll do it, but only if someone thinks that they're not working well. So, we have opportunities to present proposals, you know, if they periodically will be reviewed. If somebody is, you know, unsatisfied, if it's unsatisfactory, you can make that request. I think that's a terrible way to do this, and I think it's undisciplined and highly uncompetitive, actually.
Mm-hmm.
We have a lot of people, I think, that would be out there as the different vendors that would like the opportunity to compete for these contracts rather than certain people getting them and then keeping them forever. And it seems like there's a lot of favoritism in that, and I'll just say it that way. And some people have been long time in some of these, these roles, and occasionally they move around a little bit, but I'm not impressed. So, I want to see an actual matrix that says, so people can count on it, every year this is going to be done, or every two years this is going to be done, or whatever. I somewhat see where we might want to stretch a little bit out, the attorney maybe for continuity for two years. Banking, maybe, you know, not starting and stopping, you know, accounts. Maybe auditor, sort of like working with your accountant, it's kind of nice from year over year to a point. Insurance, I think we need to bid that out every single year, quite frankly. Be competitive on the marketplace. I'm, I own an insurance agency. Do I go Mountain Health? Do I go Blue Cross? Do I do Regions Blue Shield? You know, do I do Pacific Source for my group coverage, or any of the others? You know, you can go to the larger ones, and that, and there are some of the national firms. I think that stuff needs to be out there, and certainly that's on the, on the life and health side, certainly on the property and casualty side similarly. You know, can travelers do it? Can, can mutual, Enem Claude do it, or, or whatever, large and small? So, I think that this is, I just don't think this is a wise way to approach this. I do like that we at least did some sort of a dollar threshold where it does at least have to come to the board approval. I don't know if 150 is the right number or not. I'd, I'd be curious to know how we, how we came to that number. It feels a little arbitrary, but maybe there was a thought process behind that. I'd love to have that shared with me, so I can understand the thinking behind that. So, I think, quite frankly, policy seven point zero one point zero four needs to be completely reworked, and, and I guess I, I was trying to be, you know, go along here and, and, you know, not make a wave on this, but at the end of the day, I, I can't do it. This is a grind I've had for over 11 years that I've been on this board, and it's right back in our face. We're about to codify this policy, and I, I think it's terrible. And so, I want to put some significant structure and some guardrails on this thing as to how it's done, so everybody has a proper expectation and a timeline of when all these things are going to be done. And that's my input.
You're done?
Done.
Okay. Yeah, I have some serious concerns about it, the way it's written here. As you remember back when we hired Colton, there were issues there in terms of the process, and my concern is that the people who are using that person would have the most input for the requirements, but also, I want to make sure that the people who are using the person are the ones who have, have the control or the higher, essentially, a lot, most of the input, or if not all of the input, we have to work it out. I don't want to see the board and the administration in conflict like I saw before, where work was done, and then, in my opinion, based on hiring hundreds of people, there was a set of requirements the board had, and there was a set of requirements the college had, and the college did a lot of good work, the administration, and then there was not the same, that their recommendation wasn't accepted, and I don't want to see that happen again. So, I'd like to see that we work on this, and to me, there are two ways to work on it, just like, and I'm trying to look at Terry over there. You talked about working on some of the issues, and we had a, we talked about doing it offline with a meeting, and we tried to split, split up who's doing what and work those issues. We can either do it in a board meeting, or we can do it offline and, like with the ACCT folks, and then we have a, make a recommendation of the board, and the board, of course, has to have the final say as to, well-
It's still have to go back through the Senate.
Right, and this, yeah, and this is a college one at this time, and to me, do you even need a, a board policy for people who are only supporting the board? But, but for the people that are supporting the college, you need a college policy, right?
So, who supports the board only?
Mr. Chair, can I ask that question?
Go ahead.
Okay. Does the board clerk support the board, the college, or the president? Because when Shannon resigned, which I know I didn't know for almost a week, in fact, I found out third-handedly, but she filled two roles, and one of them was the board, the board clerk. And I know there was some input from some of the trustees that said, hey, we'd like to have some sort of involvement in the hiring of the board clerk, if she's our board clerk. We were not included in that process at all, and I wasn't aware of the board clerk for probably a week or two after she was hired. I'm not saying that was a good hire or not, but the question is, does the board clerk, by definition, work for the board? And should the board have had some sort of involvement in that process? That's just one, one question. You know, similarly, you have the attorney. The attorney primarily works as a function of the, at the request of the board to cover the board and college matters, so it's kind of a downstream effect. So, I could see, you know, so is the board clerk fall into that? I think the attorney does. I'm not sure what other ones do. What else jumps out?
Okay, so-
I'd like to hear his response to that question.
I'd like to make a comment. So, this is an issue that is sensitive, frankly, between the board and it, and the administration, and we need to make sure we come up with something where we could, that we can all live with and that we all follow, and maximizes the efficiency and effectiveness of the board and the administration. So, to me, we need to have some discussion on that, and, so there are two ways to do it. One is President Swain, myself, maybe Terry, and the ACCT folks.
Are we, are we ever going to get the conflict resolution consultant? I mean, this is a perfect topic for it.
It is. And so far, we, I have not been able to get enough people together for the conflict resolution, so my agreement with the ACCT people is to do it in pieces. Okay? So, we, I would prefer to do it offline with Terry, myself, and President Swain, and we can work the, and ACCT, obviously, because we need that, there, those consultants, and then we'll work that, and I'd like to do that in like the next week or so, if that's possible.
Yeah.
Okay? So, we'll go ahead and see if we can have, maybe Kristen set it up, and we can work through it. My bet is we can come up with something that everybody can live with, and then we'll have to go from there. The main concern I have, of course, is the Senate and the rest of the constituent groups have already worked on one, and now the board is saying, well, you know, well, we need to get it done, and I'm seeing it being kind of a real bone of contention for the last year, and we need to get that resolved. Okay?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Okay, help me out here. There seemed like there was about three different things. There was policy seven point zero one point zero four, and there was the issue of the conflict resolution, and then there was the discussion of who actually works for the board, and what's, and what's the appropriate engagement of the board for those people that work for the board. So, I guess Greg was asking for an answer, so I guess the question would be, who works for the board, so we can have clarity on that. And then, once we get that, then there's the question of how those folks are hired, this policy, and then the conflict resolution. So, there's three different things that you're going to address, although a couple of them do dovetail.
And, and we will do that offline.
Okay.
Okay, and then come back to the board. Okay, do you have any comments?
Well, I think that ACCT training has made it very clear, you have one employee. End of discussion. It's me. And, and when you hire a consultant or a, the, the attorney is not an employee of the college. The attorney is a hired professional under seven oh one oh four. When you hire a, an employee, you hire one, and then I hire everybody else. That's, that's, that is established, there's no question, and that, that's the way it works. You know, I'm sorry if you don't like it, but that's the way it works.
Well, if one, my reading of title 33 is that the board actually gets to make some decisions on some of those folks. So, we'll need to work that out. Okay?
Okay.
If you're going to go to statutes, I'd recommend you have a lawyer there to interpret.
So, I would suggest that the chair ask if there's consensus to follow that procedure and then work it, and come back to the board with the proposed policy.
Right. So, yes, I'm asking if we can get together and work that. Terry, myself, Dr. Swain, ACCT, and Colton.
Fine with me.
Yes.
Got all right with you? Okay, there's three. Good with me. How about the rest of you?
Yeah, as long as you're not making decisions and we get a vote.
Yeah, we can't make decisions, we just make recommendations.
If you want to make a recommendation, I'm open to that.
Okay?
Certainly.
Good, because this has been out there for a long time, we need to get it fixed. Okay, so, moving past that-
I, there's something I'd like to say, too.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, sir. Reading through this, I just want to share a history lesson, and this, I'm going to share my opinion and experience that, is, is my opinion that if you, anyone's paying attention to the qualifications for NIC's interim president, there is the discussion, extended discuss, discussion about the job announcement, I think it was, or minimum required education requirements, or what it was.
Experience.
Experience, thank you, Todd. Trustee Banducci. And in my opinion, that was all about allowing human resources, the opportunity to exclude, and I said the word exclude applicants they deemed unqualified. So, I see the words prolonged and specialized intellectual training that enables a particular service to be rendered. I see no definition of prolonged. I see no definition of specialized intellectual training that's left to the committee to decide those arbitrary terms of how long do you have to be in your field, in a specific field? And I just, my, I've said it before, and people can disagree, but I'm telling you my experience, when I first got on this thing, it was in an unrecorded special session about the health building expansion, where there's an RFP for the building project. It was an eight million dollar building project, and it was at least two of the contractors, local contractors, who didn't even apply because they felt the decision was already predetermined. So, seeing more words like this, prolonged and specialized intellectual training, is not headed in the direction of the president's goals of RFPs that are in there.
Okay. So, we'll take that into consideration when we're working through it. Okay?
Thank you.
Anything else? If not, let's go to new business, discussion, accreditation, meeting report. President Swain, would you like to make any further additions on what you, to what, in addition to what you had in the president's report?
No, I think I'm, I'm good.
Okay. I'll make some, if you don't mind. Yeah, I was there, I was asked a number of questions. I felt it was constructive. We'll see where we go. I think you said the report will probably be out on Friday, and I think we made a good showing to them in terms of communicating the progress we're making, so, but there's still work to be done, so we'll see where that goes. So, the next item is anything we, comments we want to make about the ACCT Community College Legislative Summit Report, and that was in Washington, DC. Do you want to say something, Brad?
I'll just mention that we were able to meet with Senator Risch and Representative Folcher in person, and we met with the staff of Senator Craple, and we made our concerns apparent, and we were well received. So, it went rather well.
Good. Trustee Zimmerman.
Thank you. I, I would agree, it went really well. Personally, it was a fabulous experience for, for me to participate in the legislative kind of process by getting to meet some of our legislators and, you know, bring forth the things that we thought were important, like Pell Grants. And I also, I personally had attended the New Trustee Academy, and Ken Burke was one of the, he was the presider for that. It was a really good experience. I got to meet a lot of other trustees in the country. We did some roundtable case studies on what would you do if this happened in your community? So, it was a really good, a good experience for me. I really enjoyed it.
Okay, good. Yeah, I went and basically, I would have the same feedback or comments as trustee Zimmerman and trustee Corkhill. It was very constructive, and we did get our opportunity to make input into the process, specifically about some reporting and that was not allowed right now, and the college should be able to do it, so we've asked for the law to be changed, and for Pell Grants. Do you want to say anything about the Pell Grants and what we were talking about?
Sure. The, currently, Pell Grants are not necessarily applicable to short-term programs like, like Air Force Training. And so, while, while we recognize the value of those, the federal government doesn't provide funding, and so, we, we ask them to support the initiative to be able to use Pell Grants for short-term training that is not necessarily leading towards a degree, which is what Pell Grants have typically done.
Okay. So, unless there's something else on that topic-
Chair, I, one more thing to add.
Go ahead.
Please, thank you. There was another plea that we made to our legislators, and that was, maybe you can help me out with this, but the Pell Grants, when a student receives it, sometimes, if the, the amount of money that they receive is more than what they use for books and tuition, it becomes a taxable event for them, so that seems unfair for students to have to claim that on their taxes, so we pleaded that with all of the legislators to please take, take that off the books and allow the students just, if they get a grant, just call it a day and let them keep the money.
Right.
Anything else?
Chair, have a question? Chair, have a question?
No?
Me?
Yeah, Trustee McKenzie.
I saw NIC, thank you, Chair. I saw NIC was listed as a participant for some event at the Biden-Harris White House, or some administration. Did which, any of you participate in that?
So, no, Lloyd Duman went, and that was, it was at the same time, we were invited to come and speak about the, the, the different programs and how they were accredited. I, I'd have to get Dr. Duman to, to, you know, to speak about that, but it was about career and technical education, and how do you get students to participate in career and technical education? So it was, it was a, and in fact, it wasn't actually at the White House, it was one of the buildings surrounding it, and, and no, no, I don't think any of the elected officials were there. I think it was Secretary of Labor that was, that was present. So, but they're, they're working on trying to figure out ways to get more students interested in career and technical education, if I recall correctly.
Okay. Anything else? Next topic, this is two weeks ago now, a lot of things going on. 2024 Idaho Legislative Session Report. Since you were leading that essentially, President Swain, could you start the comments off? If you want to make any additional ones?
Uh, yeah, I mean, I think I, I covered it pretty well, and it's, it's just, it's unclear how the, what the outcomes are gonna be. I think we did a, a good job of preparing our legislators. This year, we had a workshop, and then the, the send-off, we were able to talk about the different topics that were of interest to NIC. I, I think they went to session better prepared from our perspective, even if the, the change in the, in the budgeting process, maybe, they weren't, they weren't able to influence things as well. I think we, we prepared them much better than we have in the past for, to support NIC when they got there.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
One of the things I thought was interesting was, it's been quite the kerfluffle about the, the change, changes that have been instituted, particularly in JFAC, and how they're running the meetings and doing that. The irony of it is, is most of the trip looked pretty similar to what we've done in the past. When we briefed the House and Senate Education Committees, one was in the morning, one was in the afternoon on Tuesday, all five presidents, excuse me, five, all four presidents, I was thinking trustees here, all four presidents presented together. They each spoke individually, and then answered as a group collectively, showing a united front of, of the various many similarities that the colleges have, but each pointing out a few of the, of the differences that each of the colleges have, a lot of it geographical. And even at the JFAC, the analysts got up and spoke, but then the president, each of the presidents, we did instead of, we were there with CSI, CSI went first, Dean Fisher. But they got to speak, and then they got to field questions. So basically, only thing that really happened was the president, instead of speaking this much, spoke this much, and the boilerplate stuff, the analysts went ahead and said that, and we didn't get to show the slides we normally do. Normally, we'd have a few more pretty slides and a couple other things. But otherwise, the format was really not that different for, you know, the way this all went. I guess the biggest difference probably was that normally, we'd do that the last week of January, and we called it Education Week, and all four colleges, as much as possible, have all five of their trustees there. So there were times there, we'd actually be all, all 20 trustees. This time, it was broken down, and, you know, it was just two of us at that time, and I think CSI had three trustees, kind of there or not. I, I know Lard Stone was there for all of it, and, and then different folks were there over the two, two days. So, so that did prevent us from doing anything amongst the trustees. In the past, we've tried to do some brainstorming together, or training, or, or, you know, just, just getting to know each other and working together, and, and seeing how we can mutually support each other. So, so it did limit the opportunity for the trustees to have any engagement. But from our briefing standpoint, it really was not much different. And of course, several years ago, we started transitioning away from any line items, so that wasn't an issue anyway. Although, we still did say, we had our three things, and we addressed them.
Okay. My, my impression is, what happened was, they used to just take the numbers that came from the analysts at, in the governor's office, and the legislators wanted more control, so they tried setting a process where every department would have two budgets, one which was minimum, one to survive, and then another one where they had to justify anything, they wanted more than that. And, and part of the context is that a lot of the COVID money is drying up, and the actual revenue in the state is down like 3%. So they, we're trying to come up with a better process to control spending, and they tried doing it pretty extreme, just without input from the presidents. But at that point, what happens is, yes, they can talk about costs, but President Swain for, for our, for NIC is the only, that's the only organization that knows cost versus benefit. So they had a, they could make the numbers add up better, easier, but that, from a business standpoint, they really needed the input of the management team at each college. So then they backed off, and didn't quite get back to the way they were before, but yeah, they changed it pretty much back to the way it used to be. Okay? Any further comments? Okay. So the next one is the second reading for the Civility Resolution. We have one red line on it and one. Any other further comments on the Civility Resolution? So that's Tab 8.
Should we cut down?
I think it still needs one more thing. If I get up at just 30 seconds.
Okay? Any other input? The, the red line came from the discussion we had at the last meeting in January, and frankly, I was, that was suggested to me, and I had agreed to that. So I don't have any problem with that, but that doesn't mean there's not additional things that are needed.
I think it just needs one more thing about a willingness to search for solutions. Each one of us.
Do you want to propose some language?
I'd like to come up with a, a paragraph. We, we can pass this as is, but I'd like to add, add that paragraph. I don't have the words right now. I think I need at least more than 10 minutes, so.
Well.
We can, you can pass it and amend it later.
Sure. We can pass it an amendment later, or we could wait till next week, but it look, that might conflict with if we run into a lengthy meeting on the.
The minutes?
On the minutes, so.
Well, it'll be done there, it'll be in front of everybody, then. I think, I think it'll either be voted up or down, and we stick with what we, I, I think if we push this to the next, that special meeting with the minutes.
You'd like to do that?
Yeah, I think so. It's only a week.
So, I have to have a motion to postpone it for one meeting, right? So I move that we postpone the Civility Resolution till the next special or regular meeting.
Yes, so moved, so. Oh, I'll take that motion, sir, if you don't mind.
You're seconding.
All right, I'm seconding.
Any comments? Okay, so vote.
Yes.
Yes.
Aye.
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 And I vote aye, so it's 5-0, and we'll handle it at the next meeting. Okay, we have the recurring reports. Oh, I see where we are. Okay, sorry. Recurring reports, Tab 9. Any comments on that one? So we have a policy and a procedure.
Can, can there be, maybe it can turn into a procedure, but I'm just gonna state my goal and desire, a history of like, when the last college memberships were presented? Like, for example, like, college memberships were presented in the most, in the January 2024 Board Packet, right? So like, if college memberships, you know, it's in January of, of this year, great, it may be in April of, of next year, you know? There's some discretion in this policy. So is, either in the procedure, can there a procedure be generated from this and come before the board? Or can we modify this policy to basically, like, keep, keep a history that people can refer to for when these annual reports are just provided?
Are you looking for history information, or you, is your intent to make sure that it's done on a periodic process, basis?
Yeah, uh, uh, not necessarily on a periodic basis, but like, if people are gonna talk about college memberships, it'd be nice to know the last month that it was done. So if the procedure is basically just written along some location, that basically says, hey, the last time college memberships was presented to the board was January of 2024.
Is your intent to have a centralized place where there's a history of it?
That exists already. We, we have that, it exists, it's a, it's, it's a file we have where all of these are tracked. So it's, it would be no problem just to add that to the report. I mean, I don't think we have to modify the, the policy or procedure, we'll just add that to, I'll add that to the report.
Let's get back to our, our process of, I've got the floor, and, you know, that type of thing. So, do you have a further question?
It sounds like it wouldn't be too much work, but the goal that I'm saying is for the public to just be able to, like, maybe when they go to read this policy, be able to go to that Excel file, or go to that PDF that is maintained on some website, that, you know, if they see college memberships report is coming up in April of 2025, that they can, you know, refer to, hey, this was last presented to the board, January 2024, and, and go actually back there and provide intelligent public comment to the board.
It's also part of the minutes and part of the Board Packet, so.
So.
It's already there.
It's kind of a pain to search each month by month through the minutes to find when things are presented.
Make it part of the, Mike, make it part of the report. I mean, we'll just make that part of the report. I don't think we need to change the policy or the procedure for that. We'll just make that part of the report. So every time a report is given, there's a, this report was last provided to the board on this date.
Okay, yeah, let's, let's go back to the floor. Okay, you done with the floor? Okay?
It's, it's still not being heard, but, it's fine.
Do you have further comments? Trustee McKenzie?
Open to passing this as is and proposing a solution paragraph to the policy, because that's all I can control.
Okay, so you want to make a change later? We'll pass it as it is.
I'm not gonna vote for it, but you're welcome to it, sir.
Okay, so I make, I move that we adopt, let's see, I have, need the numbers here.
20105, 20105.
201, a policy and procedure, 20115, as is, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Trustee Banducci.
Not fully understanding Trustee McKenzie's concerns or what he wants to do. I will just notify you in advance, I will abstain on this vote, because I want further clarification where he's trying to go with this. So that's okay. If you guys have the three votes, then you're fine, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna abstain, because I'm not sure what position I'm taking, because I don't know where Trustee McKenzie is.
Okay. If I, Chair, if I may make my case?
Go ahead.
Okay. There is a lot of information that the public wants to know, and isn't, is, is now getting. I gotta give the administration credit, like, these reports is put, I see a lot of work being put into it, and I appreciate the team behind it, and it's good stuff. I'm saying this because, just because college memberships may not be coming up in the next three, four months, the public may want to be able to access the last time college memberships are there. And I'm, I'm saying, as somebody who deals with our Board Packets a lot, and has to go back and find stuff, I'm having to go back to each of the minutes and do a word search through each of the PDFs. So if I have three years of Board Packets to go through, I have 30 PDFs to search. So I'm saying, it would be very nice if these policy would basically detail, the, detail the administration to have a publicly available information source that say, hey, if you care about college memberships, it was presented January 2024, and it anticipated to be presented between January and May of 2025. Right?
Okay. Let's let President Swain.
So, I, I think I have it now, and so I, I would propose that we create a website that has essentially a list of the recurring reports, when they were last presented, and a link to the report, so you can just click on that link and have the data right there. Is that, is that along the lines of what you were talking about?
It is much closer.
Okay. So we can, we can absolutely do that. I don't think you need to change the policy, we'll just do, implement that.
So, well, it's better to write stuff down, whether in a procedure or in a policy, because if the person changes, and all of a sudden, the training doesn't go as planned, then it stops happening, and it's a good best practice.
So I, I think that's a, a detail that we can put in the procedure, and then, and it doesn't require further approval by the board, because it's a procedure. So we'll put it in the procedure, and I can present that.
You're talking about the college procedure?
Well, even the board procedure. We can put in the, the procedure for implementation, we can add that.
Okay, so, do we want to?
We can, I think we can approve it as is, and then we'll just add that. Or with them, we, we can, we can make the amendment now, and approve it with amendment, and then we'll just add it to the list.
Why don't, why don't you?
You want to propose an amendment?
No. I think we give the administration time to take this policy feedback back and work a solution, and, and propose saying, this is the policy, we felt it didn't need to change. If it doesn't need to change, or if it does need to be changed, I'm not giving, telling people what to do. But if they think it's appropriate for a procedure, then they can say, hey, we think the policy is fine, here's the procedure, and it's written down. So, but I think giving the administration time to do their work would be appreciated by them, and would be proper for this board. And not approving this policy is my firm recommendation, until that's done.
Chair Wagner?
Go ahead.
Thank you. Would it be possible to address, we have a policy and a procedure, could we address the policy separately from the procedure? My hope is that perhaps we could pop, pass the policy, and then table the procedure until we have a new version that incorporates some of the requests for a landing page, like we've discussed.
Chair, if I may?
Go ahead.
In response to that idea, this board only controls policy, so I just feel that it's appropriate for this board to approve the policy, and witness the interpretation of that policy is the result that's intended as the policy is written.
You're, you're saying you want the, you, you're willing to approve the policy?
I'm saying, if somebody comes to me with a written procedure saying, this is how we interpret that policy as written, then if that procedure and that policy align to my interpretation of that policy, then I'm willing to pass this policy then.
Then or now?
Then. When I see the interpretation of the policy as written now. So what we're getting into is just interpretation, sir, and it's operational decisions to interpret policies.
Okay. A moment. Give me a second.
So I don't think if, uh...
Well, I'm going to withdraw my motion, um, but I move to approve, um, policy two dot zero one dot one five. Do I have a second?
Is it, is that different than your prior motion?
What?
You, you withdrew, but then it seems to me you made the same motion.
The previous motion was to approve the policy and the procedure.
Ah.
Okay, and there's a reason why I'm doing this and I'll explain it. So I'm saying, again, repeating my, uh, motion, I move to approve policy two dot zero one dot one five. Do I have a second?
I'll second, I'll second that.
Okay, uh, discussion, uh, I probably should start off myself. In looking at this policies versus procedures, I could see that in terms of the content you're, you're looking for, Trustee McKenzie, that should be in the procedure, not the policy. So I don't see any problem with, uh, going ahead and passing or approving the, uh, policy now. And then what we would do is ask the, uh, well, it's actually done by the policy committee, so we'd have to have, uh, talk, work in the policy committee, Terry and I, and we would get the input from President Swain and we would come back with a procedure and then we would have the board look at the procedure at that point. I think that meets all of your concerns.
I feel heard, sir, thank you very much. I appreciate your willingness to work towards a solution.
All right, so we've had a second, any further conversation?
Uh, I would just like to make a note for the record.
Go ahead.
Uh, a note for the record for the minutes is that Trustee McKenzie believes that this policy should be passed alongside the procedure, but also understands that policies are an iterative, iterative process and, and note.
Okay, so if there are no other, uh, comments, we'll go to the vote. Trustee Corkhill.
Aye.
Trustee Zimmerman.
Aye.
Trustee Banducci.
He abstained.
You abstained, so you're not commenting right.
You can vote if you want.
I would appreciate if you'd ask Trustee McKenzie first.
Okay, Trustee McKenzie.
Having said what I said earlier, no.
Trustee.
Okay, then I will abstain.
Okay, Chair votes aye, it passes, three, uh, one abstain and one nay. Okay?
Just for a question, Chair, are these, you're, you're kind of doing them in roll call fashion for the minutes. Do you want to see them in roll call fashion or do you just want the total vote count?
I've, uh, because of the various questions, I just want the total roll count, that's all we need. I hope Susie's listening there, okay, good.
If, if I, Chair, if I just may request that my name be associated with my no.
Okay, we can do it as a roll call then.
Chair, I, I also like the roll call vote, yeah.
Okay, so, uh, Board Clerk Susie, you'll take it as a roll call vote, thank you. We're, we're try, we're trying to make it easier for Susie for the minutes and comes up with some standard ways. And as I suggested or mentioned before, I was supposed to get with her yesterday, but with all the work I was doing on the post thing, trying to get $12 million and so I had, I, there weren't enough hours in the day. Okay, so I would get with her next week or later this week, probably next week, and we'll, uh, keep working on our processes. It's all a learning experience for all of us. Okay, so now we're down to, no, we've got one more thing. The, the one thing that I thought we have left out, I see here, uh, North Idaho College Board of Trustees Plan for Achieving Goals for 2023, uh, 2024. This is actually recommendation from the ACCT meeting last week. So any comments on this document?
Just a question, Goal Five is in, in yellow, is there?
That's the one that required.
That was a Sarah's input, wasn't it?
Yeah, Sarah Garcia had to provide input on that and so that was, they didn't apparently take the highlight off.
Okay, so the input's been made, right?
Correct.
So the, uh, yellow is misleading, at this point it doesn't mean anything. Okay, any other questions? No?
Wait, I think board responsibilities, the board will understand and implement the President's Annual Performance Review as per policy two zero two zero two. I think that should just be implement the President's Performance Review.
I probably disagree with that at this point. Okay, let's just go ahead and pass this as it is, is where I am, unless we have some other comments, I'll make a mo-
I, I do have a comment.
What's that?
This is a first read and we can move forward with this. Generally, I refer to Ken Howard's comments, how we have a kind of a tradition of, of going to second reads. And mainly, I think it's important for tonight, just because public comment was moved to the end and if the public has anything to say for board goals, board responsibilities, I think they should be afforded the opportunity to communicate.
I would agree and I was with the first reading, let's just keep it as a regular first reading.
Yes, sir, and maybe we'll correct the yellow in the next version.
Okay, looks like we have consensus, so then we're ready to go to public comment. And we have, uh, six people assigned up, although I don't see one of them that I'm familiar with. So let's go on to the next step. I did want to read something, um, that, uh, in terms of the rules, so to speak, around public speaking. The board will take comment on agenda items from members of the public who attend in person and commenters will be limited to two minutes per person with no giving of time to others. A sign-in sheet will be provided, which we have here, and, uh, and provided at the interest of the meeting room will be collected at 6:00 PM, which we've done. No advance requests for a public comment will be accepted. If the interest of a, in the interest of a timing meeting, the board chair may end public comment at any time after 30 minutes. Remarks are subject to NIC policy two dot zero one oh three. I asked the, uh, board, uh, to, uh, not interact, to just listen and respectfully and then, uh, and not make comments, we kind of got into comments before and we don't want to do that. Each person, a public citizen willing to address the board on the agenda shall provide his or her name and the agenda subject, which one person didn't do, the others have, uh, on which they wish to comment. Public comments shall be limited as determined by the board chair, or it's me. The Board of Trustees may listen to such public comments, but is not obligated to provide responses, in fact, we prefer not to. If the matter presented requires additional dialogue or action, uh, Board of Trustees may direct that the matter be placed on the board's future agenda for further discussion and review. The decision to allow public participation in the meeting is the sole discretion of the board chair. And then there's a, uh, art, a note on, uh, you can go to board@nic.edu if you want to make outside comments, which probably right now don't apply. So, uh, the first name I have here is Michael Gridley, but I know Michael and I don't see him. So I assume we move, uh, to Robert Shepler, Robert's always here.
My name's Robert Shepler and I'd like to speak tonight about the civil discourse policy. As a citizen, we have very limited opportunities to access and speak to the board. Where we can send emails, we can speak to the board directly through these meetings. And if on the off chance we bump into the board at their office, then we could do something like that. But we're restricted as citizens with repercussions. If we violate the policy, we can have our microphone silenced, we can be warned by security, um, to, to tone it down. We can be escorted off the meeting or out of the meeting room. Or we can be, um, if I understand correctly, we can even be trespassed off the meetings from being able to attend. However, in reviewing the policy, I don't see any actions outside of censure that can be taken to, um, discipline or redirect, uh, a board member who doesn't follow the policy. We understand that board membership is hard. You hear every complaint from the community, you get very little praise. We try to balance our comments to praise where appropriate, where we believe, and you hear everything that we vent. However, as far as the reactions back, they have to be professional. You have to have a thick skin to be on the board. We all recognize that and I'm assuming you all recognize that as well. But when we have board members that speak over each other and disrespect each other, that's difficult to observe. When we have board members that use their professional NIC email to attack members of the community and then they go out and represent the school at a national event, that doesn't speak that we're sending our best and brightest to do the job. Follow up, let's make sure we're on an equal playing field for everybody, thank you.
Thank you. Michael McGowan. You're speaking on accreditation.
Excuse me, that was meant to be the subject of, I would actually like to address something that Mr. Shepler just said. In regards to the actions, he was speaking, of course, of the actions of Mr. Banducci last month. And, um, one of the gentlemen over there in administration was requesting an apology from Mr. Banducci for his certain statements. So this is not to approve of anything that he did or say it was prudent or appropriate, but I think that Mr. Banducci should not apologize and it's a matter of equity or fairness, let's say. That he shouldn't be the only one. He's gotten a lot more personal attacks from others than he has given to other people. And granted, what Mr. Shepler said is purely correct, that more is expected of you as a trustee. Still, I think it would be equitable if the persons that have attacked him would apologize and then there could be a mutual, uh, exchange there. So about accreditation, I probably won't be able to get into this very much because there's some preparat, uh, preparation for this. A public commenter of last week, sorry, um, last month, made a statement talking about personal attacks that, um, the three trustees, Mr. Banducci, Mr. McKenzie, Mr. Wagner, are trying to ram their values down the throats of the community. I see this kind of thing fairly often where, scratch my head, got to try to figure this out. What can that possibly mean? Because we elected these trustees, we, the community, elected the trustees, the majority of voters and taxpayers did that. So you would think that's because we agree with their values? What other community are we talking about that this person might be complaining is having values shoved down its throat? I'll have to leave to another time, so thank you for your time.
Thank you. Russ McCain. McLean.
Well, hi, you guys, um, I was going to talk about something, but I already had a little discussion with Wayne Todd split and that's too bad, I want to talk to them both at the same time. But the lady with the intimidating Auburn hair gave me a note, policy. And I think this is important, after watching the two attorneys, no offense. There's a conflict of interest clause that's missing in policy and it needs to be dealt in strictly. I see where things like this Redmond Insurance donated $30,000 to the KRCC. You know, um, a lot of people that use that money is, his rates are too high. You really need a strong conflict of interest and that needs to be addressed priority one because things are out of control until the elections come, things will change, hopefully. But policy number one, conflict of interest, I need that thick.
Thank you. Okay, uh, see, I think I skipped Jamie Berubi.
Berubi, yeah.
Sorry.
My name is Jamie Berubi and I'll be addressing board training, civility resolution and board goals. I noticed that the public comment was moved to the end, um, which could be a good thing for the board chair to set tone and create efficiency for these meetings. I would ask the board to consider, uh, not voting on agenda items until public po, comment has been made, if this is going to be a pattern. I still have a concern with the civility resolution regarding the political persuasion as an identifier. I had not been, had I not been interrupted at the January meeting so rudely, I would have asked that any wording regarding political persuasion be admitted as it risks diversiveness. If the board chooses to leave that language in the resolution, then offer other identifier via such a, that could be considered for inclusion such as race, creed, color and sexual orientation. I had the opportunity to observe the board training last week, I thought it was really good. I thought some pres, uh, work was made between the board and President Swain. I wanted to talk about Goal One, the accreditation and that board members will participate in NIC board development actions with ACTC consultants. If board members do not participate in this required training, they should not be allowed to participate in Goal Two, Community Engagement, numbers two and five, which includes intending civic events, legislative processes in Boise and meeting with, uh, local legislators. Why are taxpayers paying for meetings that are especially cost, you know, cost a lot of money and conferences for the lack of good faith effort on some, uh, trustees to participate in these mandatory trainings? I hope this board will take bold actions to transform itself into a function unit by fully understanding and implementing best practices for board governance through personal professional development as well as targeted study group.
Okay. Let's, let's, yeah, we need to go ahead.
We get two minutes.
Yeah, that's not the way it works, but, okay.
That is inappropriate.
Please, please, I just ask everyone to please respect the time limits.
Yeah, Teresa is here, okay, go ahead, Teresa.
Hello, Trustee Corkle Zimmerman, President Swain, Chair Wagner, Mr. Boils and Trustee, what's? Thank you, McKenzie, it's really embarrassing to forget somebody's name who I obviously know, Dave Riley. But I'm here to express my support of something that was said by Trustee Banducci at the last meeting. Believe it or not, Teresa Bormpel and Trustee Banducci have something in common. I had come and spoke in January and talked about how much it costs to send five people to a conference down in Las Vegas. It was over $20,000 for hotel registration, the hotel minibar, check the receipts. And, um, but Trustee Banducci said some things last time that convinced me that maybe it's a good idea. He said that when we go to those types of conferences, we get to share information and learn information from fellow professionals. He said that we get to support students and we get to support colleagues. He said that we get to talk to people in similar positions and understand our- He said that we get to talk to people in similar positions and understand our similarities and differences, and maybe how we can do our jobs better. And yet, the same board, the KCRCC three that were endorsed by the KCRCC, as is being done in other boards throughout the county, are advocating that we drop our memberships and collaborations with national organizations and even local organizations. So it's amazing that Trustee Banducci can see the benefit of conferences and travel to professional opportunities for himself, but he can't see them for faculty and staff members. But once again, Trustee Banducci and I have something in common, and that's not hyperbole.
Thank you. Okay, so with that, we, that's, that's everybody. And so next we have remarks for good of the order. Brad, do you have any remarks? Terry?
No.
Greg?
Appreciate you running a well-run meeting.
All right, with that, words earned.